... Because the guy in the car on the other side of the fence.
How are you, man?
Alrighty.
Good, good.
Hi. How are you?
Good. Want to complain?
Go ahead.
So I don't complain?
I'll listen. Oh, you're talking to... You see, Joe got elected to the... Joe Bucklo got elected to the Jersey State...
Hello.
Was that right?
First. First person to motion camp.
Is that right?
It's interesting.
You need me, how are you?
There you go, that's me.
Right there.
You have trouble, trouble, trouble with you. Does it follow your rounds? Okay. Only in Lakeview.
Well, that was seven oh one.
Everyone's not there. Only in Lakeview.
Seven oh one, for those who work out. Soon is a good start.
Most towns, uh... It started, right?
You know what's funny? I do act like I was fully aware of it a few years ago.
As opposed to now?
I'll just believe, I'm talking about that. I like that word. You're at six o'clock, you know, it's eight o'clock past six. I think some people lined up at the desk where they saw. Hey, you can talk to that, hey, that's okay. And now we've been planning this like my... Please, sir.
This is all right.
One desire for members. I'm moving to a position. So he's a great job before, somebody's... That's a lot of sound. Very good job. And I work with someone that was five percent... Because you're... The connection which wants to tell you it's our son. What's the word?
Sure.
How's it going?
Oh, I don't know, I'm looking for something. Hold on, you're... Everybody else.
Is this one here supposed to be starting? Nine o'clock is the same.
Is it nine o'clock now?
Yeah. Considering people who are telling us in Congress, crazy and crazier. President, we're not believing in him tonight. Before he starts, before he backfolds. Then he'll reset all these things on Friday.
Hello, everyone. How you doing?
How are you?
Fine.
How are you?
Yeah, I'm fine. You look something again, right? How we doing? Good evening.
Thank you. Before we begin.
No, before we begin, this is what I spoke about. About the railroad line.
See?
Ah, how are you doing? This is, uh... I tried to... Right next to... This is, uh... Railroad. Railroad, yeah, railroad track. Right? Railroad. The guy wants to come down here. And he wants to utilize spur from here. He wants this thing to load it, unload it, go back up.
He's on the red one.
I recommended that he sign that.
Yeah, so he is... So he did that. Yeah, but the question, the capture, the capture, allow... This railroad is... Right away. That's right away. So the pressure has to be to utilize that. Uh... Loading on the road. Railroad. Unfold. Yeah, that's what. You have to bring a spur. It used to be, it used to be a spur of the arm here. About over here. Brian, are you doing play, please? You know she is, uh... Shows about over here. So there's a spur capable of, uh... I guess about over here. That came over here. Do you want to make a spur? Yeah, another spur, loading load. Come back up and go to this yard. The dynamic, what?
They're special for the...
Okay.
If they're deliberate process. Conyers only.
Yeah, which is...
The guy who... There's a bias in the... He's a gentleman.
A part bird.
He's a coner. He already played for the charge. Even if he tried.
Yeah. But he can night.
He won't organize them. And he'll...
He can light them.
Or else he'll be in the property.
They'll get it.
Put something in our, uh... Resolution.
We have to help you, please. And for one time, they were in the way. They wanted to let this quarter one.
I'm on the land. Or the con.
We was in life, I have to do.
But you did... Con or we had a...
So you, the sheriff, talk to your father. Ask him to go over risk.
You know that my father...
Correct. So I know the boy, you know, that you... Uh, that's what my name is. Hey, that's good. Okay. We're going to...
Go back to you.
Yeah. Okay. What you did, you have conference.
Email tomorrow.
Okay. That's, now we go back there. Okay. And the workers. No, it's men, the workers. And the workers.
In the books.
They're doing their... They're doing conservation.
Oh, I...
Reserve, I already, I already got, I already got.
I understand.
I mean, because it's a year before the beginning of the Jewish month. Starts in the middle of August. Okay. So there's about three weeks of old boys who were running the peace. And then you get to... Yes, your back is...
Ooh.
And they're very stuck with their kids. So it's... I don't know.
I know, it's always a week.
A week is long.
He says a week back. You're being... I don't think that's...
Yes, yeah. Sir, is you? Who you? God, I'm solving it. Sir? How are you?
Good.
Yeah, no, about that, uh...
All right.
Okay. Ah, yeah.
Well, I use the microphone.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
I missed it.
Yeah.
On the time.
Yeah. I had to make a... Last time we got off.
I know.
They have to... Right? That's good. I get it.
Here. Yepsy, yepsy is...
Do we have a minion?
Yes.
Ribby is not coming. Would we have, do we have them? Let it go. Let it go. What? Wait, wait.
I just want to get the hard to see.
He did it tonight?
I didn't see him. No, I just...
The left?
The bar.
Weird. Oh, it's your side of the town. You know that.
Well, you know.
No, I'm not.
I'll go with you.
I'm gonna... I got one. Thank you.
What is this? So you have to pee? Pee the piss.
Ready? How we? Look at this empty room. We're gonna be happy, you know. We're gonna be watching Trump's, uh, big... Soon as well. Right, so, so exciting. Trying to... Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. Tonight's meeting is going to advertise according to New Jersey State sunshine law. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Gelli.
Here.
Mr. Halverson.
Here.
Mr. Langley. Mr. Naftali. Mr. Ribbiak. Mr. Ingber.
Here.
Mr. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Halverson.
Here. For the record, I still have a number of, of members missing. I'll be placing Mr. Gross and Mr. Ingber in lieu of the missing members. Like this, gentlemen, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, in the Zulu, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Walter. Can I have an approval for the minutes of the May seventh meeting?
Go ahead.
Second.
I have, um, from Mayor Gelli, a second from, uh, Obi Gonzalez. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Mr. Gelli.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Mr. Ingber.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Halverson.
Yes. Okay. Um, Madam Secretary, any correspondence on tonight's meeting?
Uh, no, I don't have any, but appeal number four zero seven six, this...
Yes.
It has to be carried for the next meeting. We didn't get the information needed prior to ten days.
The next meeting is July when?
Second.
Seven, two on a Monday.
July two.
July two, okay. So if anyone is here for appeal number four zero seven six, my spitz, that'll be heard on July second. Okay. Um, anything else?
No.
No. Uh, okay, so then we're gonna go back into old business. We have appeal number thirty-eight eighteen, crime insurance, about that, um, air condition that we started to discuss last month. And we're here trying to figure out what the story is.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Mary Monstee on behalf of the applicant prime insurance.
No good evening?
Good evening to the rest of the board. Sorry, didn't mean to offend anyone.
Not tonight, it was last night.
So I, we appeared before the board, um, last month at the May meeting, and at that time, the board requested some more information.
One, one second, just for the record, um, we didn't, we just talked this application yet. Mr. Naftali has shown, so he's our seventh member for tonight's meeting. The alternate stills, still remain. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Naftali. I'll start again, because I didn't say much.
Didn't say anything.
Right, I just said that last month I appeared before the board. Board requested some more information. Um, I do have the builder here with me this evening, Tony Newman from Builder Supreme. The applicant is supposed to be here as well, but I don't see that he's come yet. Um, the builder, who can tell you in his own, we can have him sworn, and he can tell you in his own words that he was unaware of the condition. Um, I did print out the minutes. I have them in front of that, in front of me, and I can share them with the board members if you'd like to see them. There was no particular reason why the HVAC units were placed on the ground and not on the roof. There was no discussion in the minutes about the air conditioner units being placed on the roof. It does say, at the end, at the very end, motion to approve with the condition that the basement will be for storage and kitchen garbage pickup. Where was it along? Here, HVAC units will be roof mounted and shielded. It is in there on the motion, but there is no mention of it as far as any discussion. Um, certainly, my memory, and I actually just ran it by Mr. Hines, who was the engineer on the application, there's nothing in the minutes, and we don't recall any particular discussion as to why those units were particularly supposed to be located on the roof. I do want to point out that this resolution is from June of two thousand thirteen. The applicant received the CO on the building and has been occupying the building for three years now. This came up when the applicant went for bond release. So this did not come up when they got their CO. The CO was issued. They were allowed to occupy the building. The other thing that's interesting is when the builder went back and checked the plans that he worked off of, the plans that he started working, that he worked off of, did not have a note on them that said that the units were to be put on the roof. One thing we did discover is that this took place at precisely the time that Mr. Hines suffered his heart attack, and his office was pretty much out of commission. That may be the reason why. I'm not pointing fingers at him, because he's sitting here and I like Glenn. But, um, this was really just a mistake. Um, and it's an expensive mistake to cure. Um, we did submit to Fran, I hope the board members received, an estimate from the air conditioning, from the heating and air conditioning contractor that it's going to cost ten thousand dollars to relocate those units to the roof. Um, the HVAC contractor has, could not be present tonight. We did try to get him to come. He did indicate that there would be no, and I guess we can, the builder can testify as far as the access, because the board did have some concerns about accessing the unit for repairs. Guess at this point, I'll call the builder.
Before you call the builder, I wasn't here at that meeting, okay? I'm reading the minutes that I have for the record of the time of our office. Mr. Flannery, there will be FedEx and UPS deliveries. There will be FedEx UPS deliveries. There will be private trash pickup, and will be scheduled at all three hours. AC units will be on the roof as scheduled. And, I'm sorry, will be on the roof and shielded. Requesting a buffer waiver, uh, other than defense. I see that alignment. So of course, there's no discussion. Mr. Flannery rightfully just, um, said so. So there was no, based on what I see here, there was no reason for discussion, because Mr. Flannery says that there will be, um, AC units on the roof.
But it wasn't, no, I...
Wait, wait, let me finish.
Okay.
Based on that, we turn then to the, to the, um, resolution, where rightly on the resolution, um...
There's a condition.
Um, there's a condition, based on Mr. Flannery's testimony, that it will be on the roof. So of course, there was no, there was no discussion, there was no, there was no reason for discussion, because it was agreed upon during, during the hearing.
Testimony.
During the testimony.
But there was...
That's the way I'm, that's the way I...
No, I agree with you.
Uh, I am reading it.
And I, I agree with you. I just, my point of saying, I, I don't think there was any particular discussion. I don't think there was a particular reason, other than...
Other than...
I, I, I don't know.
Other than Mr. Flannery. Other than... It would be required, because it makes sense based on, on the map.
I don't think it was required. I think the question, as, as typical in most meetings, we get asked, where are you gonna put the HVAC equipment? And Mr. Flannery probably answered, on the roof. I mean, he's here, he can, he can give his...
So...
Give his recollection.
So, so, so this is very simple. We had, we had an application, we had a hearing. Um, professional testimony has testified that this AC unit will be on the roof. No further questions were discussed about it, because obviously, that was very satisfactory to the board members at the time, and I wasn't here. I can only tell you the way I'm looking at it. So why should there be further discussion when, um, the professional testified right away that it'll be on the roof?
Honestly, I don't think, and, oh, Mr. Gelli was, was, is the only member on this board tonight who was here. Looks like it was Mr. Langley, Mr. Gelli, Mr. Munt, Mr. Ribbiak, Mr. Pomerance, Mr. Gonzalez, and Mr. Schwartz. So you got, Mr. Gelli's probably the only one here who could potentially remember.
And as you said, there was no discussion.
Oh, Mr. Gonzalez.
How about Mr. Gonzalez? Can we do copy of it now?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, there was, listen.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gonzalez was here.
There was no need for discussion. There was no need for discussion. There was no need for discussion. One of the things I also noted, and I mentioned, you know, mentioned it to myself, okay? In reading the application itself, that the application, according to what our engineer had recommended, he said either or, okay? Either they can have it on the ground, or they can have it on the roof. Hence, when Mr. Flannery said we'll put it on the roof, there was nothing to discuss, because apparently, according to our engineer, they could either put it on the ground, or they can put it on the ceiling, on, you know, on the roof, okay? So therefore, at that point, there is no discussion. We let basically the engineering crew decide where we're gonna put the, the roof. And apparently, according to the minutes, Mr. Flannery said it was gonna go on the roof. According to our engineer, he said you can either put on the ground, or put it on the roof and shield. That's basically where it was.
No, I agree with you, but it wasn't crucial that it be placed on the roof. Granted, the applicant should have followed it. The builder who's here can tell you, can, he'll give you his side of the story as to why he didn't know about it and didn't follow it. But the applicant didn't realize, the applicant himself didn't remember. Um, for some reason, the builder didn't know it was there, because there was no note on the plans, and therefore, they went on the ground. I'm, I'm not arguing that, that there was a mistake made. There was definitely a mistake made, and I know the board doesn't like when these mistakes happen, and then we come back and...
Exactly, the board doesn't like when these mistakes happen. The board is basically fed up with these mistakes.
Right. I was trying to be nice.
I know, but I'm not.
It's also, it's not just a mistake. We, we've raised reasons last meeting, why it doesn't exist where it is, why the heart is inaccessible, why based on, had we had a discussion back then, I wasn't there, but had we had a discussion, maybe we would've, it would've been on the record. But we didn't have it, because Mr. Flannery, his great wisdom, looked at it and said, you know what, it comes up. I mean, it goes that way too. And, and looking at the recommendation from an engineer, we didn't choose. We got chose. You know, your engineer chose, okay, because the engineer gave you a choice. Well, we're gonna put it on the roof. We said, okay, great. Okay, and that's where, that's why we're...
Can I call the builder to testify?
I, I have, Mr. Halverson wants to say something.
I just want to ask, Terry, is there any, either safety, besides the fact that it would be very uncomfortable for them to fix it? Is there any other issue of being in where it is right now?
It's compliant with the board's approval. From what I understand, I haven't been out there, but from where the HVAC is located, it's my understanding you do have difficulty accessing.
Can I have the builder testify as to that point?
One second. Besides the difficulty in accessing it, which is, at the end of the day, is their problem, um, other than that, is there any safety issue, or any, anything that maybe there'll be a fire, and maybe it catches, because it's like one inch away from the ramp.
I know where maybe safety protection issues. What we don't review now.
But they want to issue the CO on the building if there was a safety concern with the placement of the air conditioning units.
I would say that that's the case.
Right. Easy CO on the building.
I know, I know. It's, the, the air conditioning is tucked in right by the ramp.
I went there, I saw it.
Yes, Mr. Gelli. I also went to see the air conditioning in the building. The units in the back, I don't have a problem with. That unit under the, um, the ramp.
Yes.
Which is tucked very tight against the building under the ramp. Looks quite weird. And it doesn't belong there. If there's no difference of damnship at this point to the inspectors, then, you know, it's a different story, but it definitely is not something which we would have approved had we seen that at the beginning.
Okay, let's move on. You want to have some more witnesses brought up?
Yes, I'm gonna have Mr. Colmster Newman, please.
Okay.
Mr. Newman, would you raise your right hand, sir? Do you swear or affirm the build of all truth?
Yes.
Could you give us your full name, spell your words?
Neftuli Newman. N-E-F-T-U-L-I. Newman, N-E-U-M-A-N.
Newman, you were the builder who built this project, correct?
Correct.
And you work for which company?
Builder Supreme.
Can you describe for the board, I, I guess, how this mistake happened for starters?
Um, I do apologize, and I look back now, and I, I did make a mistake. I've done plenty of projects since then, and I've not made this mistake. This mistake didn't happen now. This mistake happened over three years ago. Um, it was at the time, I went back at the, the, the event. What happened was, I started off with a plan that did not have it on the plan. The, and the last plan that I had, the final plan, did have it on, as little note, added on, inconspicuous, not brought to my attention. Where it is now, I don't think it's dangerous. I don't think, a mistake happened. I definitely made a mistake, and I didn't follow it. And all I'm asking is for mercy, is, is, it will come out of my pocket a lot of money to fix it. It's not, it doesn't look bad, it's not dangerous.
Is it, is it gonna be easy? Will it be difficult to access the unit to do repairs on it? The one unit that they're talking about, the one that's tucked away there.
So my HVAC, I looked at it also. I understand your concern. I called down Guy Bernstein from B and R Heating and Cooling. He's in Israel, as of now, and we couldn't make it here tonight. He was gonna come and testify. He said it's not a problem, it is tucked in tight. And it is, but he said he has no problem servicing it, and it would work. All I'm asking for is, uh... Some relief.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
I think, I think it's a, looking at the fact that there's nothing dangerous about it, there's no safety, I think it's an honest mistake, and, uh, and I would, I would, uh, agree, just to let it go and move on to the next application.
That, that's fine, but I have one question. I did, this issue of mistake keep on coming up, keep on coming up. What, what, and I...
Well, I'd say it's an old mistake. It's an old mistake, but I do understand.
But what are we, I think, Mrs. Weinstein, I don't mean to be, um, I'm a wise guy in that, but I think a lot of these applications you bring in, a lot of these mistakes.
That's why I bring in a lot of the applications here. So I'm gonna have, it's gonna end up being my application.
So I'm gonna address the question to you then directly. Before we, I, I'm gonna make a decision. I wanna hear from you. What are your clients gonna do to stop making these mistakes? It's ridiculous. They're on over and over, over and over, over and over.
I, I hear you. It's as bothersome to me as it is to you. Are you sure? You think I wanna be doing this? Coming back and saying I wanna plead for mercy because it was a mistake made? But, but this one is different than, than, than some...
They're all different. You know, I wanna hear from you, what are we gonna do to stop this, this shenanigan? You make it look like a, like, like, like it's a kangaroo court over here.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers. I mean, I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers, it's just, it should've been court at the CO stage, and it would've been moved at that point, or at the inspection stage, nobody courted until, I mean, we're talking, more than three years later.
You would've wrote the application that was a mistake then.
What?
You would've wrote the application that was a mistake then.
Then you would've for sure turned it down, because then it would've been, they would still be doing construction, you would've said, just move it.
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
There was a quote that came in for $10,000 to move the units to the roof. The ones at the back are not so bothersome. Do you know how much it would cost just to move the one under the ramp?
But to move it to the back?
No, just to move it, they're two on the side.
Just to move that one to the back.
That one.
Oh, to move it to the back?
To the back of the roof was.
To the back would be easier, that's fine, that shouldn't be that expensive. But to move it to the roof, the problem is, I have to get a crane set up, the crane costs a lot of money, I gotta open up walls, which is, it looks ugly, going out on the outside. I gotta give them, I gotta give them an access to get up to the roof, so, getting up, it was more complicated.
It's actually more than that, actually, Chairman.
What?
It's actually more than that, you better check with the architect and see if it's even designed.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's designed to go to the back. Who knows if it's designed to go all the way?
I'm saying to the, on the roof.
Gelli's talking about the rear yard.
The rear yard. Now, maybe you move it around, would that be a problem?
I have to look at it, but possibly shouldn't be a big deal.
Mr. Chair, if I?
Yes, go ahead.
I mean, you know, a way in the future to address your concern is, I think, as an attorney.
You're not talking in the mic.
As an attorney, you really have to encourage the clients to really read these, these resolutions, because if a builder reads the resolution, he would know right off the bat. A lot of times, like you mentioned, it was in small letters on a print, and maybe he didn't notice it. So if prints get thrown around, they get thrown to subcontractors, maybe people won't pick up, but you should encourage everyone of your clients to read through the resolution. That's number one. Number two is, if we had more, you know, defined set of plans when they come here, we, at one point, we were, we were demanding that, then, then whatever's on the plans is what we approve. And then it's not, we don't have to go, well, you know, we offered it to be here, we offered it to be there, but whatever the plans, that's what it is. So it's just a suggestion, and to address what the, what the chair asked to mention, I, I think it can help us in the future.
Now, that, that would help, if the plans, if, if the plans would've been correct, it wouldn't have happened, but this is before the days when.
Well, you mentioned that it was on the bottom of the plans originally, and then the engineer mentioned that maybe you should.
The later version, the later version. Which is not the version that you, it's not the version that you saw, because the version that he started out with did not add it on the plan.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion, make a compromise, seeing there's no harm, leave the air conditioners at the back where they are at the back, and the one that's tucked under the ramp to move it to the back of the ground?
It's two, it's two. It's two, but there's one that's most critical, which is right underneath the ramp.
So just move the one?
The one that is.
Again, to the chair, we're not giving anything. To move, it's critical, it's critical for the, for the next person who's gonna fix it, it's gonna be more expensive for them to fix it anyway. We're not, we're not giving anything, there's no safety, there's no danger, there's nothing. What are we getting to put, make them move it to the back for what? To make it easy for them to fix it?
I think the point is, the zoning board is looking for their kind of flash. You want, you want us to give you relief, fine, we won't hold you to what the, what the plans that were approved for, but this can't come at no cost. I think that's the idea.
Correct. Though I agree with, with the board is saying, I tend to agree with Mr. Natali saying, I liked this project when I saw it. I was very much in favor, which is why we went through it.
Yeah, well, I don't think it's a problem, I think, I think it's just making too many, this mistake issue's happening very, very too often, and, and I think what, what Mr. Gelli's looking for is some sort of compromise to send a message out there that, that these things shouldn't happen again. That's, that's the way, that's the way I'm, I'm, I'm understanding what's going on over here. Okay?
Do we need to make a motion?
Yes. It does not appeal to the public, so we're gonna make a motion. Let's make a motion, whoever wants to make a motion whichever which way, and let's move forward.
I'd like to make a motion to figure it as is. I, I really feel that we're getting the point across. I understand that there's an issue, and we're not, we're gonna be very, very careful in what's going on, they get the point, but if we're not giving anything, it's just throwing money away for nothing, there's not even an issue with safety or nothing. So I, my motion is to.
And let me ask you a question, before, before I ask for the second motion, what kind of message are we gonna send out there to the public at large, that these mistakes shouldn't happen again? Because I guarantee you that in the next month or two, we're gonna have another mistake back there.
I think mistakes, each one is taken on its own merit, and we, and the fact that we made them come back, and the fact that they're here, the fact that they're sweaty, because the fact that they could be, could've cost them a lot of money, there's not enough of a reason right now to throw money away for, for.
Okay. It's just, it's just, as you, as you're aware, there's, these mistakes are happening.
I know, it bothers me, it bothers me also very much, but I think every mistake has been taken with a grain of salt, see, Webb was a mistake, it was an honest mistake, a not honest, I feel already from the builder, it was an honest mistake, this was five years ago, 2013, and, and it's something that is not affecting, not even one thing of danger or safety, to make them move, I don't see the point.
I just want to understand, yeah, I just want to understand the concern, uh, uh, my concern is, that it's just, it just takes about a calendar time, just these mistakes to discuss it, and it's just not fair for anyone that's sitting up here to be busy.
Chairman, before, would you give a second on the motion?
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, before I was going to second, I wanted to just have a discussion with them. Okay, I hear Mr. Natali's motion, can I have a second?
I second.
I have a second from, from Obi Gonzalez, Madam Secretary of OAK, please.
Start from Z, this time.
Mr. Gelli.
All right.
Mr. Halberstam.
No.
Mr. Natali.
Yes.
Mr. Ingber.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
No.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Halberstam.
Yes. Okay. Good night. Well, remember, Mrs. Weinstein.
I'm not coming back anymore.
Please, okay?
So Michael, I'd better not make any more mistakes, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good to know.
Okay, moving, moving, moving ahead, we're gonna go into.
Forty sixty-two.
Forty sixty-two.
You're with the three.
Forty sixty-two.
You're with the three. The applicant seeks mine subdivision approval to subdivide an existing 2,978 square foot property into two residential lots designated as proposed lots 56.01, 56.02 on the subdivision plan. The lots are shown as zero lot lines proposed for future development with a duplex building. As noted in the application, this property is situated within the R seven five single family residential zone. Two family and duplexes are permitted provided that newly created lots have a minimum size of 10,000 square feet and have a minimum lot width of 60 feet. Conditional use variance relief is required since the proposed lots do not exceed the required lot area.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Abraham Panzer appearing on behalf of the applicant. I gotta take care of some legal jargon first. The last time I came to Philly, I advised you I was in a conflict, I was representing an immediate neighbor who was an objector, and the applicant as well. I'm happy to report to you that we've worked everything out between us, to the point we have a signed document that I am no longer in conflict, and I'm permitted to go forward by Mr. Kreiser. In addition to that, I have a letter dated March 15th, I understand, but it's an immediate neighbor on the other side who could not be here, and he asked me to read it in, it says, it's from Morcov Holdings LLC.
Which holdings?
Morcov.
Morcov.
Morcov. I guess he was a little lull of business, I don't know. March, March 15th.
Brian, what's it?
March 15th, 2018, it's addressed to you, Mr. Halberstam. Mr. Halberstam, we are the owners of premises located at 13 Congress Street, Lot 24803, Lot 57, immediately adjoining the subject property and the premises of 42 Congress Street, Lot 24803, Lots 53 and 4. We hereby write to express our firm's support as the board give favorable consideration to this application, the replacement of this existing dilapidated building by proposed new residents, the benefit to residents of the block and its environment. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact me.
I'm gonna mark that as A1.
What's that, what's, Morcov?
They are adjoining Lot 57, 56.
Okay.
No, no, I'm sorry.
In addition to that, this application, I sent out on March 13th, I sent out five certifies to adjoining landowners, asking them if they would like to sell anything at all, make it a conforming lot, please advise me if any interest. I have the certified, and I didn't hear any response whatsoever. This application is in the R seven five zone, and meets all the requirements except one, the square footage. Other than that, it meets everything on all sides, to the point where many times, Mr. zoning board is very concerned about the side yard setback. Here, the side yard setback is 7 feet, here will be 8.16 feet. We meet or exceed every other thing possible. Other than that, we meet on all fronts. The only reason we're here and not before the planning board is because of the square footage issue. And I, and I would also say that we would like to, the purpose of this exercise is, we'd like to sell this unit to somebody in the family to keep the family together. To be, without further ado, I would ask you to swear in Brian Flannery.
Honored, do you swear or affirm the buildable truth?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. I have four exhibits marked here tonight. A1 is a copy of the tax match zone, the subject property in RN. In pink, I have the zone line. I'm sure the board is familiar with this area, to the west of us, we have a D4 zone that's townhouses and businesses. We have to the north of us, the D2 zone, the RN zone, that has a park building, and we have the P1 zone, which has the, like, the housing, sorry, property. I blew up the area where this lot is, just to show the board that this is a unique lot, and I'm gonna have today to all come in and say, need to be good. This is a big lot of 66 feet wide, and 131, 137 feet. The only reason this application is a, by right application of the planning board is because it's short 15 feet in the backyard. Nobody driving by is gonna know it's short 15 feet in the backyard. It's, it's gonna fit a duplex nicely. You can see coming from Old Avenue, all the lots on, on the south side of Wood Street are 15 feet wide, so they're not coming back to send anyone on a duplex. When you get to the north side, a majority of them are 15 feet wide, other than two that actually exceed 10,000 square feet, so they can legitimately come in, and by right has a duplex. And you have the one on the corner that's 8300 square feet, and for a corner lot, it's totally different for this application.
So can, can we just go through the numbers, okay?
Yes.
Let's start from the bottom, 58, Lot 58, I'll be good at that lot.
It's 50 feet by 140.
50 feet by 140, okay. That is, 50 by 140, that's approximately how much?
7,000.
So, 50, Lot 57.
33,500.
Okay, nothing to worry about.
33,000.
Is there anything built on 37?
57.
I mean, 57, a lot over there. I couldn't tell from the map.
Um, no, there's not been built on that lot.
Okay. Okay, 56 is the subject property?
56 is the subject property.
55?
55, 76,000 square feet.
55 is 76,000?
76,000.
76,000.
76,000.
What's the dimensions of, what's the dimension of that one?
60 by 125, one side, 130 on the other.
And yours is, the dimensions are?
Eight, nine, 78.
No, 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 what are the dimensions of yours?
The dimensions were 66, so we're wider and we're deeper.
You're wider and deeper, 54?
54 is 50 by 125, 6,000 square feet. 53 is 45 by 122, less than 6,000 square feet.
Okay, keep going.
And the big lot.
Yeah.
Uh, in, in the backyard, we have the townhouses, it's low, 8, 83, showing whole area, I'm sure we all know what that's like, we've got park buildings all over the place down there, and this is a, a lot that is in desperate need of redevelopment. We have an applicant who's trying to provide two housing opportunities, so there's a housing opportunity for a family member. A4, it shows a, a blue blow-up of this area showing, you can see the townhouses in the back, and the board is familiar with houses in that neighborhood.
Do you have any blueprints of this project?
What's it?
Okay, keep going.
I, I, I've been working in town long enough to know that the board likes to hear these applications, 9,000 and some square feet, we're 21 square feet short of that. So it's virtually a 9,000 square foot lot.
It's not 10, what, where's the length of that?
Well, 10 is we go to the planning board, and we get it by right. Less than 10, I come in and I, I explain to this board the special reasons and the circumstances, and I know that you like to hear 9,000 and something.
So, let me ask you a question.
Well, you don't get to hear, you don't get to hear 10, because if it's 10, it goes to the planning.
Yes.
So usually, usually if it's 9,875, but this is 8,000.
Yes, well, and that's why I, I have the exhibits I do, to show the board the area it's in, and to show that it's in desperate need of rehabilitation, redevelopment, and, and we also send out notices to the neighbors, because they're the people that are most directly impacted by this, and the neighbors would come to the meeting if the neighbors thought this was a bad idea, we'd have neighbors here saying it's a bad idea, if the neighbors think it's a good idea, they're gonna tell you that as well. So I'm gonna give you my professional opinion, why I think it makes sense, based on the municipal land use law, the, the master plan, the, the, and the surrounding development.
Brian, just a second, if you can just take me back, maybe a few minutes, maybe I misunderstood. You said you have special reasons, what, what was the special?
Well, I haven't gotten to the special reason.
But I have another question for you. 10, you go to the planning board, 9, anywhere between 9 and 10, you go to the zoning board, and below 9, where do you go to?
Anything.
Thank you.
Anything less than 10, we come to the zoning board.
Right, anything less than 9?
And Lakewood, and Lakewood gets a good application, because they get sprinklers and landscaping, and the front of the building looks nicer, it's beautiful. And on, on an application like this, that if it had an extra 15 feet in the, in the backyard, it, it would be conforming, and that's what, it's my professional testimony, that this will fit in good in the neighborhood, so you're gonna get the applicant's professional given this.
I have another piece of testimony for you, that this would be, and the HD7, it would also go to the zoning, to the planning board.
No, it was in the HD7.
It would, if it would go to the, if it would go to the planning board.
It, it, no, it would go to Fran, because in the HD7, you can have 8,500 square foot lots.
So there's your answer, less than 9, you go to Fran.
I said HD7.
In the HD7.
In the HD7.
And, and this area probably should be an HD7, but nobody asked that.
I'm waiting for the testimony. But at the end, by the end of the day, it's less than 9.
Yes.
Okay.
21 square feet less than 9.
It's less than 9.
But to be aware, my colleagues have intelligently said, we've noticed the neighbors twice, one combined lots, conceiving and selling them, about 70,700 notices, and they're here, their R name is here, but they're not supporting the application.
I, I, I understand that, but at the end of the day, it's less than 9.
That's correct.
Okay.
But when you weigh that, you have to weigh each application on its own, let's see who comes forward to the application.
Before we continue, while we need it, I don't think, in my history of sitting on the zoning board, I've ever approved an application less than 9100 square feet for a duplex. I don't, I can't remember.
Well, if we, if we look.
If we do this one.
If we look over in the Cherry and Oakland area, the planning board, first of all, approves 2,000 square foot.
Don't bring in Linden Gardens here, do not. I told you this last time.
And, and if you drive by Linden Gardens, it's very beautiful, it's very, very tough. In addition, in addition to that.
I said the zoning board, not the planning board.
In addition to that, there was one lot where the board found my testimony compelling, and there was one where it was under 9,000 square feet in that same area, and at that time, it was an R10. But my testimony at that time was compelling, and I hope that my testimony has gotten better.
It was permanent.
Yeah, I say, one, one tequila, two, one tequila, two men. Okay? But let's move on, but let's move on.
So, looking at Terry's report, on page two, it states, the reason we're here, duplexes are permitted use if you have 10,000 square feet and 60 for wide. We have 60 for wide. We don't have the 10,000 square feet, we're short in depth 15 feet in order to accomplish that. The lot area is 8,978.31 square feet, where 10,000 square feet is required. The, the purpose of the exhibits is to show you that there's not another lot in this area that is gonna come back and say, well, you can approve this in June, and I want it too. It's an area that is in need of redevelopment, and this would.
Can I second that comment? We have another application tonight, down on Sampson Street, also about 8,900 square feet. Just say what you know. Keep going.
Mr. Chair, but.
Yes.
You know, you make it, you make an argument. Brian, you make a good argument that, um, nobody other neighbors are gonna be able to come and ask for it. But if you put that, you know, that comment around, that means that this will be the only duplex on that block.
No, it's not gonna be the only duplex because there's more of them. There's, there's two lots that are bigger than ten thousand square feet, they're gonna have duplex. There's townhouses in the backyard.
By the way, what's across the street?
Yeah, we're changing the landscape on, on.
Thirty-six, hold it.
We're changing the landscape from the neighborhood that is in serious need of redevelopment to one with a beautiful duplex. And I think neighbors that live in the area will get up and give you their opinion on that. I don't live in this neighborhood. I think it's a good idea. As a professional.
Brian, if I were to give you a free house, free house, free and clear, would you move this neighborhood?
No.
Brian, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, what are those size lots? Right across the street?
Fifty by one-six, seventy-five hundred square feet.
And this one is, and this is sixty-six by?
Sixty-six by one-hundred-and-thirty-six.
Thirty-three, eighty-one, thirty-six, yeah. What? I know. Those old seven, those old seventy-five hundreds? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Keep going.
So, uh, hey, hey, we're here because we don't have the lot area.
We need it in every other respect.
Every, every, every other respect it's meant. So now you, I have to do the positive and negative criteria and the special reasons. The, uh, the special reasons and, and the, uh, positive and negative criteria, you look to the master plan. The master plan of two thousand and seventeen. No, we have a, we have a two thousand and seventeen master plan. That says the same thing, only on page two, it talks about the population growth in Lakewood, which hasn't stopped. In two thousand and seven, it said we had population growth and we should accommodate, accommodate the people. Uh, in, in two thousand and seventeen, the planning board said the same thing. Uh, the conclusion in, in the paragraph in two thousand and fifteen, were total of four thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-four births to Lakewood township residents. Based on this information, it's important that Lakewood plan residential development, the housing's growing population. The master plan continues on page seven, uh, under the vision statement, encourages development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. And this, this relates back to, uh, the smart growth plan, we had this as the downtown regional center. And the downtown regional center was an area close to the downtown with high density residential to accommodate population that can walk to services, that they, uh, take public transportation, uh, and can house the population without the detriments of other type of, uh, housing. So it's, it's my testimony, this, this needs that criteria. The municipal land use law, NJAC forty call fifty-five D two, under the purpose of the act. Uh, A is encourage municipal action to guide the per-produser development of all lands and estates in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And it's my testimony that replacing this unit with a unit that accommodates, uh, two Lakewood families, uh, does promote the public health and, and safety. And I think, uh, you can get testimony from the, the neighbors if, if, if they feel the same way. Uh, E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentration that will contribute to the well-being of neighbors, communities, and preservation of the environment. And, and this, this does have a, uh, a population density that's consistent with this area, the population density in this area with all the housing authority, with the, uh, with the apartments. Uh, and the, the apartment complex, right across the street here, is an area that has very dense, uh, housing. You can see there's like five buildings. Uh, it's, it's a, it's, it's, it's an area that this housing will provide, uh, a neighborhood concept that, uh, certainly is in keeping with that. Uh, I, you know, my, my son went, he was growing up in Lakewood. The kids on his basketball team, we would drop off in those units and, and there was very little parking. It's a very dense, uh, and, and it's probably the reason that if Mr. Halberstan gave me a, a house, I wouldn't live in. You're a better man than I am. So we're looking for a, a deviant in particular cases and for special reasons, grant this variance for departure. Uh, uh, and we have to show that, uh, the board can grant this without substantial double detriment to public good and will not substantially impair the purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And it's my testimony that when you look at the public good, the replacing this house is a positive. I think you're gonna hear that from the neighbors. When you look at the impact from the zone plan and the zoning ordinance, when you see how it fits in here on A-one, uh, certainly it's not gonna have any impact other than positive on the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Uh, and the, the special reasons, it, it's enhancing the public good. And, and the public will give you their opinion on that, and if they're different than I am, you guys do your job. That's why you, you get the big bucks to make these tough decisions. Um.
Brian, just a couple, a couple of comments.
One moment, are you done?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead. Um, I have comments also.
Couple of comments. You spent some time before demonstrating that in the immediate area, there wouldn't be an opportunity for somebody to come forward with less than ten thousand square feet to make into a duplex. Which is bear in mind, there's the rest of Lakewood also. So we represent the whole town. So it's not just this area. Anywhere where there would be, on our side of five, there's less than ten, people would have run into the problem. But, um, in the past, many occasions, we've spoken about air conditionings at the back. Doesn't work because of the balance of the heat coming to the earth. And according to the.
Oh, we said, we said.
So number twenty says, uh, the, the H D A C units will be located in the rear. How's it gonna work this time? Has it worked in the past?
It's a common, it's a, we made a mistake. We put it on the side.
Oh.
What?
Well.
They have a comment, they said we made a mistake. We put it on the side.
The, the testimony in the past has always been that, uh, it's more economical and more energy efficient to have the air conditioning units, uh, on the side of, on the side of the building. When, when you, when you run them all the way to the back, it, it loses the energy efficiency, but it still works. And, and since this applicant knew that he, he has a, uh, a, a, a hurdle to reach as far as the area of the lot, uh, he wanted to balance and add, in, in addition to the, this stone front and the irrigation and the landscaping and all the good things that people are gonna see when they ride down the street, if the board acts on this favorably, the air conditioning units will be in the back.
All that irrigation and all that good feeling, all the good lawn can be also with a single family home also.
But it historically wouldn't be and, and.
What?
The applicant.
Historically, yes, a lawn wouldn't be nicely in a, in a single family home?
Historically, it's not a requirement, so it's not done. And especially in this neighborhood, if you look at historically, within this neighborhood. What?
It's not done because people like, like, like to live, like the way they live, not because it's not done, because it's not done.
Well, historically, if it's not required, it's not always put in. Here, it would be a requirement. The applicant's coming forward, he's saying, please approve this. I want a housing opportunity for another family member and I'm gonna make it look nice. And everybody, nobody that goes by is gonna say, who approved this? Everybody that goes by is gonna say, well, this, this is very nice and it's an upgrade for the area.
Okay. A, a, anyway, it, it's, I have, like I said before, this is, this is less than nine thousand square feet, you know? This whole application is eighty-nine hundred. Do we wanna go down to an approval, which is eighty-nine hundred, and then we have another application just like this, um, two blocks away? Guys, comments or emotions that follow the application? What?
A half a comment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Half a comment.
Brian, I, I, is the adequate be finished?
Says yes.
There are steps going up to it, so I'm assuming it was too bad.
Says yes.
But he says yes. So how many? No, we, we have enough parking, even if you do consider.
Yeah, nation, nation says number three, testimony should be provided regardless of duplex units, including but not limited to number four bedroom basements and or added as well as the first, uh, so, 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 so. Move me now, on the bridge.
Okay, so we have, we have two steps. That's it?
Yeah. Based, based, based on the application, we'll need four spaces. Okay, let me open the panel. One of the panelists wants to be heard.
Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, so lot fifty-seven, which is owned by Morca.
Yes.
So why, why don't they want us on? Make this lot a little wider.
We, I, I tell you that seventy-seven thousand, no, it's, we don't want some.
That's seventy-five hundred square feet, that one?
I asked them, I asked them.
How big is that lot?
Eighteen thousand, I said that again, and four other holdings. I want the whole size of the property. I said four, thirty-five, and I'm glad it's fine back.
But when he responded, well, you were definitely in contact with him because you have a letter.
Yes.
So did you discuss it with him?
I did, I did personally.
I'm saying some of it.
My client, we just did it, he asked me to do it myself.
What concerns me is, is that you're building a duplex over here and you have a tiny lot next door where they're gonna build a house which is going to basically look like a half a duplex. That's all they can fit in. It's gonna really look like one and a half duplexes right next to each other. Then down the block, they can build it as a right. This entire block is going to look like duplexes. That's what's, what's bothering me over here.
My, my opinion, if, if the whole block had new duplexes, it would look substantially better than it, it does today.
It's very, I'm sure if you, if you could build townhouses over there, you'd be, you would want it.
No, I think the duplexes, I think, would look nice. Townhouses, although if you look in other areas, there, there are, uh, a lot of townhouses in this area because it's the downtown regional center.
There's very little egress, putting a lot of houses.
Okay, this will be the public. How big is Morca's lot again?
Which lot?
The next door, Morca. The one that he just brought.
Roughly five thousand.
How much?
Roughly five thousand.
Morca's lot is roughly five thousand? The one that brought it away?
It's thirty-three by one-hundred.
Okay, let's open to the public. Anyone in the public wanna be heard? Our field number forty-six-two, please, um, bring it up.
My client is supposed to apply to the board about fifty-seven, has it grown enough in his mind? I'm sure that.
That's Morca, right?
Is it new construction room?
As a means.
Do you wanna take this testimony? Is this your, is this your question?
That's you. That's up to you.
No, no, to answer your question.
Open a minute.
Okay, if you want to test.
No, I don't want to. I'll give you a question.
Hold on, what's that? I, 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 I want to test. Give me a moment, guys. Okay.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth? All right, be close to the mic and volume. If you're using your full name, spell your name.
Yona Schuster, S-E-H-U-S-T-E-R.
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't. Try again.
Yona Schuster, S-E-H-U-S-T-E-R. First name, Y-O-N-A.
Yona? I can get it.
Alvin Bruce Street.
What is your address, sir?
Two-five-four Bruce Street. Right around the corner.
Which one is that?
Number thirty-six, lot thirty-six.
Number seven, right there.
Where's number seven?
Left, left, left. The corner of Bruce and Congress? Left, right. Are you?
See the word Bruce on the map? Look at the big map. Big blue on a map. See Bruce?
And, and the other end?
The other end?
To the right, to the right.
Okay, go ahead. So you're down the block, okay?
Down the block. And I'm very much in, walking up, I have family a little more, very much would appreciate that the block would be rebuilt and it would be not so, my kids wouldn't be scared, not scared to walk at night. And the block now is in shambles and that it should be redeveloped would be very much appreciated.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step up to the.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth? Maybe. Could you give your, full name, spell your name?
David, bless him, K-A-L-A-T-S-K-Y.
Spell it again.
K-A-L-A-T-S-K-Y.
Can you manage this, sir?
Two-eight-seven, do we have any?
Do we have? Where, where is that? That's also around the corner.
Around the corner.
Around the corner, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I live, I walk every, every Saturday and holidays. I'm always avoid walking on that block and chose walking on that block because it's a very seedy block. And it would be built up, you know, people, my children would be scared to walk on it. And, you know, people, somebody brought up a thought, in a single, if we built a single family home, it's not affordable for people to build a single family home in such areas. It's not gonna happen. If you wanna get it built up, a, a, a lot like this could, could, could handle a duplex. This lot next door couldn't handle people. This block could. The more people that own the block, the nicer it'll make the block and it'll be more, more desirable to walk on. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Please step up.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear, right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth? Could you, could you give your full name, spell your name?
Yeetis Kreger, Y-E-E-T-I-S, the applicant, K-R-I-E-D-E-I.
Not, not the gentleman, not the other?
This is a mistake.
She was the best. Um, the board just keeps on asking why they think this is special consideration and other people in Lakewood are gonna come, which I hear the question, and in my opinion, um, I think that because we're not developers and builders, I've been, I live in a basement with three little boys and we're looking to move into an affordable house in the neighborhood. I have a lot of family here. And just the past three years, the prices have been going up higher and higher and higher. And I'm thinking, okay, how is this ever gonna happen? And I've been walking around the neighborhood. If I see someone who looks like they wanna sell, um, trying, you know, if there's ever a house that looks a little cheaper, I've been calling all the papers, trying very hard to find a house. Now, we found this property, which is around the corner from where we live now in the mall, that was a very nice opportunity.
Who is your address now?
I live, I live on Bruce Street now. Um, we thought this was a very, you know, I saw it and first, it happens to me, we first thought it was a hundred feet square feet deep. So first I thought, wow, I really found the find. Um, and then we saw it was a little short. Now, we were just hoping that, you know, I, I think just special consideration being that it's not like we're, I'm running around trying to find things, build up open the gardens or any big development out there. I'm just trying to find somewhere to live. Um, I don't know the other property tonight. I have no idea who's coming, if it's a developer, if it's a builder. But we're just looking for somewhere affordable to live, somewhere to build up. It's not, I mean, I, I think a lot of builders come, but we're just gonna, just try to build it up and have a place to move to that will be affordable in this neighborhood.
Thank you.
Yes, I, can I ask one question?
Miss, please.
Oh, Miss Fayer.
Do one quick question. I'm just, I'm just wanting, I'm just trying to get to the background, the lot next door. All right, Mr. Spencer said he tried contacting them, but they didn't respond to his mail. You spoke with them and they said they don't wanna sell?
I never spoke, I never spoke to them. I mean, I haven't been doing most of the business call, but I think.
Sir, would you raise your right hand?
Now I see who's wearing the pants.
Pants or no pants? First one was honest.
Okay.
I, I know that right now it's a small house, but there's a, I mean, I would assume it's a good income coming in there, that is property. Like, I don't know, I don't know.
You own the property already or is contingent to this proof?
What?
You own this property already or is contingent to this proof?
No, I, I mean, we own the property.
You closed, you bought it?
Yeah.
Yours?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're done?
Yes, okay. Anyone else?
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
Yes.
Could you give us your, your full name?
Doesn't sound.
Your full name, spell your name, you're walking through the microphone.
Moshe, M-O-S-H-E, Kreger, K-R-I-E-G-E-R.
Do you live on Bruce Street?
Alvin Bruce. Yep. On the lots owned by Merka Holdings.
Gone here.
The lots on the block which are owned by Merka Holdings, they're investment properties of his, which he's making a nice rent of. And he's not looking to really sell off as of now. If he could, if he, if he could develop them on his own and make money, he would do that. Hopefully, he will in the future, but it's not like he's, he's looking to even sell pieces of his lots, especially a lot which has a structure in it. He'd buy the entire lot, would take the price from, of, of our kind lot and to buy his whole next lot. Bring the price up very much, which would make it also unaffordable. So concerning buying a few from him next door, that's simply not, not an option.
Clear. You asked him to buy a few feet and he said no, and you asked, and you hoped to buy the whole lot, but that wouldn't make it a problem?
He didn't offer to even sell the whole lot.
I'm saying, did you ask him?
I did not, did not ask.
You sent the lot.
I did send it.
I'm just wanting to say. And he owns other lots on?
Yes, he owns two lots over, it's a duplex lot. Two lots over is a duplex lot, which he also owns.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the public?
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
Yes.
Could you give us your full name, spell your name?
Kreger Glass, K-A-L-A-T-S-K-Y.
Your address?
Two-eight-seven Dewey Avenue. So I live right around the corner. I have a bunch of kids. And I can tell you honestly, my kids will not walk down that block. They say it's scary, it's seedy, there's, it's dark. The block is not full dark, there's nobody outside. And every time they walk, they go a different way. They won't ride their bikes around there. I myself, I, you know, we looked into our property on that block to buy. A few years back, hoping the block would build up. And, um, it was not affordable, for a single house. And it wasn't anything that we were able to do. We ended up buying a duplex on Dewey Avenue. And that was something to do. And I know when I was thinking of buying, it was an adjacent lot, right next door to it, that we were looking into, we had, it would have to be four boats together. And we're looking for somebody to buy a lot next door too, so we could have a neighbor. And everyone said it's too expensive. This is not something that we could do. So if it's a duplex, it's much more affordable. And that's why I feel like the block will be built up if the duplex is built there. But a single is not gonna attract people, especially the, the neighborhood, they don't have that type of money to buy a single family house.
Thank you. Okay, seeing none? Seeing anyone else?
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth? Could you, could you give your full name, spell your name?
Iren Day-Frankeel, F-R-A-N-K-E-L. I live around the corner over there. My kids.
What is the address, sir?
On Park Avenue.
You live on that?
Yeah. My kids have friends in the neighborhood and it's always an issue, like the neighbors are saying, you have to go to, go to the friends. You know, there's the, there's the government housing. You know, there's the, there's the government housing over there, which is not a very pleasant place to pass by. That block is not a nice block to go around from Bruce Street. It's also not so nice, you know, right now it's a problematic boy. I happen to be the brother of the applicant. And I could tell you, I just wanna say something else about what she, what she brought up. That, um, you know, she was looking for a house for many years. I tried to help her out and there's really nothing affordable. The entire family, who's, you know, we live in that neighborhood, we all live in that neighborhood. And there's, there's literally nothing over there that's affordable. The house has done it by six hundred and it's, you know, it's such, it's impossible to buy something there. Right now I'm looking, and all of a sudden, there's, there's nothing there available. There's an opportunity that came up and to make it affordable, maybe something she would do, this is what I really need to do to be able to change the zoning. This is not a zoning where people are trying to grab, try to get extra. It's just simple, you know, to make Lakewood affordable. These people came to Lakewood to learn the yeshiva and to be able to, you know, to live a certain lifestyle. And unfortunately, because of, you know, for example, the Lakewood growth, it's unaffordable now. This is something which will really, you know, help the young couples be able to, you know, live the dream of owning a house and living like a man, just not having to live with so many kids in the, in, you know, to fetch in the thing. I'd like this, you know, you know, first of all, as, you know, just help someone get an apartment and also the neighbor there, which is something I know firsthand, I've lived in the area for twelve years already. And it's something which, you know, it's a bad neighborhood and like the saying, it's not getting built up. Something which is sitting for years and years and years and it's unaffordable. If you could give approval for this thing, hopefully that would change the whole neighborhood. It's three blocks to do that to get changed. Anything to think?
Thank you. Seeing none? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, opposed to the public? You wanna say something? Oh, one minute, somebody's there.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole?
Yes.
Could you give us your full name and spell your last?
Irende Frankel. F-R-A-N-K-E-L.
Your first name, I missed it.
Abraham.
Go ahead.
Um, just wanna relay one anecdote to give you a flavor of the area and why I think it's very important. The other day I was turning over War Street onto this Congress Street. Middle-aged woman comes up to me, oh, by my open window, can you help me out? What is, a fellow there was starting up with me, he's calling me, he's, seems like they're about to attack me. I lived in the area over two years, the area is sitting and it's, it really isn't available to patients. This will be, I believe, a wonderful start to change the face of the neighborhood, change that block. It is like everyone mentioned, a concern in the area, it's something we wish to change. I understand the rules, considerations, but if you consider the entire area, it's an end of sort of, uh, stranglehold on the real flourishing of the neighborhood. If you approve this, then it will be in the interest of the entire area, the public, and I appreciate any consideration you give the applicants, the wonderful people, I know them. And any help you could give them and any consideration you could check, because all of them, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole?
Yes.
Could you give us your full name and spell your last?
Sir, first name is Abraham. B-E-R-E-N. Last name is Israel. I-S-R-E.
What's your last name?
Israel.
Israel.
How do you get your last name?
Israel. In the state.
And what was the first name?
Abraham.
Another. And your address, sir?
One oh one Congress Street.
Where is that located? The left?
Directly.
Uh, what?
Uh, point out.
He pointed out.
What lot is that?
Seven, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight?
Right.
Look on the big map. No, no, go, go on the big map. Brian, show me the big map. The corner? Okay, near the corner.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been living there for about two years. Um, again, like everybody else is saying, the property has, uh.
Gone here.
The area hasn't developed. Um, I think that if somebody was good, uh, or something, building going on for that, you know, approved the property to the area, it'll probably make it a lot, um, I guess more enjoyable for everybody and probably look a lot nicer because it is a, the lot is protected area and nobody else is coming into development. Um, it'll probably make a bit improved the area and probably the, um, neighborhood nicer also.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, opposed to the public?
I would just like to sum up, if I may, very briefly. I mean briefly. Last month I appeared before you and there was a large crowd of objectives. This month, refreshing me, there's a large crowd, but they're all for it. Consipulates by its absence, there was not one objective that came forward. Why? Here's just the question, why was there no objectives forward? Because we sat down with each one and listened on the floor. This neighborhood is screaming after you and say, help me. There's not one neighbor that didn't come up and tell you that this neighborhood needs to be rehabilitated. You raised a number of points. You said we had to look at all of Lakewood of I-75. True, but you also zoned it and you're supposed to look at the whole area. This area is pleading with you. The neighbors have come forward. We didn't see so many neighbors have taken the time to come forward to tell you what they feel about the neighborhood. Yes, it's an exception. But then you have to look at the facts as they are before you, not any other application. What do you have before you? You have an application before you. Yes, twenty feet, a thousand, true. But on the other hand, you have a situation where every neighbor knows exactly what's going on. Many of whom were noticed by me. They're all here and they all said, we want it, we need it, we wanna have it for the safety of our children. So you have a job and you're the fighters of facts and you're the one that has to make a draw. In my opinion, to you, this is a very unique application. This is an application that needs one vermin, nothing else. You also talked about mistakes that happen. I will guarantee you that after we heard the speech before about what the board is talking about, we, if you approve this, we will put into resolution that if there's a mistake, we eat it. We don't come forward to you because we want this application to go and we want you to feel how strong it is. This is also an application for my clients who are not geniuses in the world. They bought the property, they own it already. It's not an investment. As Mrs. Kreiger said, they're hunting for an affordable. You can see that they have very deep family roots that are on there. Two people came in that said they were family members as well. So this is a very unique application. And based on that, I'm asking you to approve this application so that it'll be the betterment for the whole area. Brian told you that one of the jobs of zoning is to rehabilitate and make the health and safety of an area. You heard testimony from the neighbors as to the health and safety area. This is unique to this neighborhood. It's unique to the problems in this neighborhood. And therefore I want you to address it accordingly. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone have any comments to say before I ask for a motion?
Uh, I'd make one comment, maybe more than one.
Good.
Um, my heart actually goes out to the applicant. I have children in town, also live in four housing. And it's also very difficult to find and it's very expensive. But why is it expensive? Because the sellers think or know that a buyer is gonna come here and plead for something that doesn't belong. We have to have, I would guess mercy to approve something which shouldn't be approved. The township has said this is an I-75 zone, you need ten thousand square feet. In the past, we've done nine thousand eight hundred, nine thousand nine hundred. This is over ten percent less. And the reason why it's not affordable is because the sellers are asking too much money because they think they're gonna get it. Well, guess what? They're not. And I don't think it should be approved. You know, with that said, um, I'm also looking at what, you know, what the applicant's wanting to do. But I also find that looking at this plan, it's a pretty large house in the sense that, uh, you have a lot of floors, you have a lot of bedrooms, and at the same time, you have a basement that promptly will be finished. And I think that a single family home with a finished basement is still accommodating two families, which is exactly what this is doing right now, will be accommodating four families. I know that War Street needs to get redeveloped, but I think a nice sized, single family home on that lot is just as nice a developed area, developed area as duplexes. Uh, right now, with, with what's happening, especially in Lakewood, we wanna see more of what's going to fit and work with the township, work with the planning and let them, you know, go to planning and say, you know something, I wanna put a nice house that fits with a basement. And that to me is more, you know, more applicable to this situation.
Anyone else?
Uh, I, I basically feel very bad for, feel sympathetic for the people that are living in the neighborhood and for the situation that it's in. I agree with everyone that everyone said over there that the township has to be, that neighborhood has to be rehabilitated, but there is a limit to where rehabilitation at what, at what cost. This board in the past has turned down duplexes at nine thousand square feet, not too far from this one. This board in the past has turned down duplexes on ninety-two hundred square feet. Yes, it was by a developer, it wasn't by a single family member. This board has approved, um, um, duplexes for single family members like, like the applicant when it came in at ninety-six, ninety-five, but there was a limit to where they were going. If we, if, if, if somebody comes in and says he wants to approve it at eighty-nine hundred square feet, less, less than nine thousand square feet, what's gonna stop the next person that's coming in saying, I want us to approve that eighty-five hundred, just like an HD seven? You know, the, the, the township set rules and regulations on, on an I-10, where we should put in a duplex and how we should do it. Yes, and we are the board of adjustments, we could adjust, but there is a limit to how far that adjustment could go. You know, I do feel bad that this neighborhood has to rehabilitate. I agree with all the neighbors in the neighborhood said, but in that's why I'm gonna turn to my fellow board members and let them decide at what price to the township and at what price to the neighborhood. And with that, I'm gonna ask for a, a, a motion.
Seeing none, I'll make a motion very aggressively, very upsettingly, but a motion to deny.
I have a motion from Mayor Gillis to deny. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from, from Ovi Gonzalez. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Gillis?
Yes.
Mr. Halberson?
Yes.
Mr. Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
No.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Halberson.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. Motion denied. Um, what?
The motion's.
I said it doesn't make a difference. So it's.
It's too much.
Okay, moving forward. Alexander Hoffman, Tenth Seater Drive.
A mistake. Is it approaching?
Approaching? Is that a mistake?
Hill number four zero seventy-one. Alexander Hoffman. To revoke on March twenty-first, twenty eighteen. The applicant is seeking both variance relief including side yard and aggregate side yard setback relief as necessary to construct the proposed addition. Blue bolt variance relief is necessary as follows. Side yard setback by deed proposed can be required. Aggregate side setback nine two point one proposed twenty-five feet required.
Is this your phone or my phone? Okay.
Flannery, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole?
I do. Ryan Flannery Jackson, New Jersey. Lieutenant Professional Engineer, Professional Planner. Uh, this is an application for a bolt variance for a side yard setback, um, and, and combined side yard setbacks. There's, uh, I have three exhibits. Uh, A-one is a, uh, Google map showing where the subject property is. And you can see it's very close to the Crystal Lake Reserve, that's that whole area that will not be developed. Uh, A-two is the tax map showing where the lot is on Cedar Drive. Uh, and it's got, uh, you know, a house on each side of it, which also shows up on, uh, A-one. And A-three is the map that's submitted, showing where we're proposing an addition on the side of.
Hi, can you lift it up, please? I remember board members have no paperwork on this because it's been a couple of times since we, um, had this in the calendar and it didn't show up. Okay.
I should probably look this map so that the house, uh, sits in a north of itself. We're considering house, we're putting on, uh, almost a twenty foot, we're proposing a twenty foot addition to the side. The one neighbor that's immediately affected, Moshe Tress, provided a letter to the board. He's, uh, out of town, he can't be here, uh, but the applicant had spoken to him, uh, and it says to whom they concern, we, Moshe and Leah Tress residing at fourteen Seater Drive in Lakewood, New Jersey. Every new to Hoffman's plan and hereby approve and fully support their application, uh, as is, uh.
Is that acceptable, um, um, Jerry?
Well, not normally, but we just said it was last application, so normally we wouldn't accept it.
Last application, as we said, last application was accepted because we have an attorney presented.
Attorney.
Last application, we had an attorney presented, so it was a matter of hell. That's why they questioned you on it.
This one is noted on us.
Okay. You would? Okay. Thank you. Let him convince you, trust, that it's okay to be five years, five years away from his property. Do we have any blueprints here? Is there any blueprints? Do we know what we're doing over there? I, I have nothing here. Do we have something? Somebody's.
This is the national?
I don't know why I don't have it. This, this time I would keep it on.
Does it, yeah, look at it. Do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything. Nobody's anything, I don't know why. I've never seen the application. I have, I just don't know what to do.
The, uh, architectural plans weren't submitted. It's an addition to the house. Uh, the.
What?
That's why you don't have it.
Yeah. The applicant, being the homeowner, didn't wanna spend money on an architect if the board was gonna say no. Uh, he, he's here to see if he could tell you, uh, what the addition is for. It's bedrooms, his family is growing and, uh, lives in the neighborhood.
What's it, the application, trying to make the application for an extension?
Excuse me?
What's the application?
Yeah, application is for a bolt variance for a side yard setback, to put an addition on his existing home.
An addition. And, and those blueprints were submitted?
That's correct.
So I'm not, can I point out something? Part of what we're gonna say is why can't you put it here and not there? And you're gonna have to tell us, well, because you're blocking windows. We don't have any architectural, we don't see any windows. We just see square lines and we have nothing to go by. So why, you know, it's very hard for us to consider everything.
Well, the, the applicant is here, he, he can answer those questions.
But descriptions is not the same thing as architecturals. Because if, you know, we just went by descriptions, this family wouldn't ask for any paperwork. We're like, we just wax elephant.
Do you have a variance plan?
I have this variance. I, I know, I have a variance plan either. I, I only have a site market complete.
You should, the survey.
Survey, I have a survey.
Nobody has?
I don't have it. But I'm saying that the.
Various plans, same as me.
I don't have that.
We, we don't have any, I'll tell you. No, I don't want no one to say anything. I don't have any.
We have not.
We have not.
Fran, these gentlemen are saying they have no application.
I have, I thought, I thought, I thought, I thought they didn't have an application. If seven, I said, no one has an application, somebody must have. Candidate, everyone lost their application. Does anyone have a court cabinet?
I have.
I have.
Yes, I have this.
What is this?
This is the applicant.
No, no, we have, we have a survey, we have a site plan, we have a, uh, variance map, something.[1741.02] No, no, we have, we have a survey, we have a site plan, we have a, uh, variance map, something.
Probably have a board name. This is, this letter is from, uh, March. This letter's from March 21st.
Okay.
The letter I have, I'm making decisions on it.
Architectural plan is not a requirement for our variance, but we, we recommend it.
Well, they're gonna be architectural, we're gonna do the plan anyway.
Is it based on the...
But then it doesn't, we say no.
Yes, and so is the basement under the addition connected to the existing basement or both?
Okay.
And is it a separate occupancy for the existing basement?
Do you have a greenie? It says green.
It's green.
I accept. Blueprints, where are they?
Sir, do you raise your right hand, each square, but I'm gonna tell the board. You give us your full name, spell your last.
Alexander Hoffman, H-O-F-F-M-A-N. I live in the 10-seater drive for the last, uh, 10 years.
So the basement under the addition is connected to the existing basement?
Yes. Yeah, what, what, what we're gonna do is that we, right now, I have five bedrooms in my upstairs and we have a grown family. Uh, my wife's expecting her 11th child. And we, we need more room, we just need more room. And we have this side and my neighbor is very, very happy to, has no problem with it. Don't need the only one affected by it. And I figured that I can come to the board and ask for a variance to come out a little bit more, just to make the house a bit bigger. Basically, I'm just gonna be putting on more bedrooms.
Why can't you put in the back?
If your wife is expecting her 11th child, you need a hotel motel.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Nobody has the variance plan either. Nobody has the variance plan.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask?
We always submit.
Give me one second.
You always submit.
While you're looking at trees?
I, 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 my mind, my mind is racing, I give you a second.
A, a very simple question.
Why do we have to go into a five-foot setback if we have plenty of room in the back? Instead of, instead of going 19 feet by, um, whatever the width of it is, you can just go put a beautiful addition here right in the rear.
Why would I wanna kill my backyard? I have a nice backyard.
It's not your backyard!
No, if I would go to the back, I wouldn't have no backyard. I have a very small backyard, I have, I have so much room on the side, nobody, doesn't bother anybody.
And you look at where the house sits, it doesn't, it's not like he's got, uh, houses all around. It's very old.
That's right, it's for this. I, I know, I know, I know.
Besides, besides, besides the fact that...
What at the top, Brian or you?
Besides the fact that, I don't know, Moshi Tress was here a couple of months ago for a couple of variances on his house. He's actually planning on building, as you know, and he's putting his house as far away from me as possible. There's gonna be even more room between houses, not the property line, but there's gonna be a lot more room between the houses. I don't know if that means anything, but, uh, that's why...
Okay, I, I have a very simple question. Because of the question that we're asking, we have no idea how big your backyard is, we have no idea how big the addition is. We are, we don't know anything. We have no, no architecturals, no, no, um...
Variance plan.
Variance map. I, I have a variance map.
It's a standard one.
What? You know, no variance map. I'll leave it up to the guys that wanna continue this application. Guys, what do you wanna do?
I am way too, uh, in the dark and I don't know what you're putting up there. And I wouldn't be able to vote, it sounds great, but I wouldn't be able to vote, yeah, 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 I don't have enough information.
What, what's, what's the question?
I'd like to see, I think you'd have a much better chance of getting a yes if you would table this and come back with something more solid, architectural or something.
Or even a more normal side.
Because you're telling us you don't wanna build in the back because, because you have a big backyard and you don't wanna, and, you know, you go... Well, you're, you're asking for, we could take, maybe take away five feet, go a little bit further in the back. Do it this way, do it that way, show us why that doesn't work. We don't see anything, all we see is lines drawn on a map and you're telling us that it doesn't work. So why should we say yes?
Why is it back, not that it doesn't work, I could probably build to the end of my line, but I have a...
You told us that. Yeah, and if you, if you comply with the rest of the zoning agreement, you have to come back here, you can do whatever you want. But you're asking us to grant you something without us understanding, why there is a hardship here, why there's anything wrong. Why should we move to do anything? It doesn't look like there's anything, there's any problems going back, other than you're telling, saying you wanna have a very large, um, a very large backyard. I mean, there are people that have half the size of backyard and they're plenty happy. I'm not saying that you don't have a right to have a big backyard, but show us why.
It's, it's... The board.
One second. Well, well, what's it, based on, based on what he's just saying now, just eyeballing this backyard, it's about 60 by 95 is the backyard. Um, and if you put up another 500, that's about 5,700 square feet. Putting on a 600 square foot addition in, in 5,700 square feet is not, in my opinion, killing a backyard. So it, it's really, it's really, you know, you're making us look like a joke. So if you would want to, 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 us looking favorably, I would advise you to come back and show us more when you're doing. Mr. Natale, what do you say?
I have no problem at all with the backyard, save the backyard, it makes sense to go to the side. But I think what we need to do is the architecture, we have to see the architecture, basically to see where the windows are. Are you facing, which side are they facing? Where is the entrance to the basement? How many apartments, is this gonna be an apartment or not? All those things, we have to be able to do it, to look at them. But going to the side, it makes sense, it's fine, if there's only one neighbor being affected, he has no issue with it. That's absolutely fine, it's safe in the basement.
No apartment.
That's right, so, but you have to see the architectural, so we're able to see it. But the side is fine, I have no problem with, with saving the back. Obviously, you need the back as well as, as well as the house. Just the architectural is important to be able to see how it's going to affect the neighborhood.
Did you, did you, I'm sorry, did you consult with an architect yet?
I spoke, I spoke.
But no one came down and, and actually did a sketch, figured out. Out, so I agree with, with the board members, like, I may not necessarily have an issue with, with going over five feet, but if an architect came and said, you know, "The house that we can design works out better to go sideways instead of going back," I would certainly consider it. I don't necessarily have an issue going over, but then to give us a reason why. You know, it's a, it's a, there's so much room before, yeah, before we approach an, a...
It's your decision, you want us to continue, we will. You want us to, um, table it, we'll do that too. You decide.
Okay, I table it, this is the first, I mean, actually the second time I'm here, I was here last time it was, uh...
Wasn't that long ago?
Very, uh...
Okay.
Okay.
Excuse me, keep in mind, you don't have to table it, you don't want to wait. We can give a decision, the decision tonight. We don't have a problem with that, it's up to you.
An architect may, may come up with a better plan for you not to go out further and then actually make, maybe turn it into what else it is, and actually come up with a very nice design for you. And maybe to your benefit, consult with a, what architect, see what...
Make your motion?
Yes, okay.
We're gonna carry to July 2nd. Do you need a variance plan and architecture?
Yes, yes.
To the board one.
Yes. Very close.
We need a vote on that.
We need a vote, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to postpone, uh, table, table, uh...
To July 7th.
4071. 471. To July 2nd, 2018.
The second?
Who would, that, that, Mayor Gilli, who seconded it?
With notices as, uh...
With that notice, with a waiver.
Without, yeah, without a notice.
Yeah, with that notice or a waiver.
And to come back with plans.
Yes. Um, um, who, I need a second?
I second, we got it.
A second from Marty Gross. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Gilli?
Yes.
Mr. Halberson?
Yes.
Mr. Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Enger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes. Yes, okay. Um, I'm gonna do something which we normally don't do, I'm gonna take a 10-minute break, a little earlier than usual. We'll be right back. Thank you.
Okay. What, what happened? We're broken.
Put in the re-earlier, and then architectural. It's in the letter. It's like what he said, you can get your decision. It may not be the one you were hoping.
He was telling you what to do.
What's the matter with that? I have a few seconds. He got a cold wave, so he can't be here.
What?
He got a cold wave, so he can't be here. I can't respond myself.
That's a smart decision. I think, yes, yes, yes.
Maybe it would've been a better...
Yes, yes. So Fran, Fran, you gotta please everybody. She's, she's complaining she can't please everybody.
I have a quasi-ligament.
He wants the password.
I also worked the, the video microphone, plus the monitor today, or somewhere, someone's phone goes on. It sounds like Charles is...
Yeah, I don't know what that is, we were only around ourselves.
Well, how might this... Have you...
No, that, that wasn't a phone, that was an stomach crumble. Is this thing on?
It's still lit now.
My daughter, this is really Edison, Edison Harding Park. And it was really funny, well, they were looking, they were talking. The house they bought was advertised, and here, my wife told me to knock up on the door. And he also, then my daughter said, "Don't tell anyone, because it's gonna go..." People said, then my daughter said, "Don't tell anyone because it's going to go serious if that happens." People kept it now shut, they negotiated, they avoided it. She said, "I remember, you wouldn't have been a thing anymore." These people didn't know, because it's always here, you know. And it was mad. Some play from here, I don't even know, maybe they're shopping. My wife saw, oh, I said, "Don't call me."
Funny that they listen to us.
Yeah, they listened to me here, they never listened up there. And it worked that great, it hit them. And the kids could walk in school, like, a little bigger, I guess. Yes, you know, two blocks in the time.
Yeah, I know that, yeah, I have something there.
She runs, she's in there all the time.
That's cool, three kids are born in Robert Johnson.
Okay, well, two kids. The kids were born in St. Peter's.
Robert Johnson's in Texas, that's right over there.
Yeah, well, she lived in the condo building, right on the top, but they come in. Eighteen, so they've been living there. And there's a lot, and there's a lot of, she knows a lot of people from Lakewood that went to the day school. Two years older than her, two years younger.
My mother's RPR one.
Is that right?
Yes, her one. She teaches kindergarten.
Okay, yeah. I think there is, she has three.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm going back. Thirty years, thirty-five years.
So, I'll be there someday, some woman, somebody on the lady, where there's a couple of kids that come up. Mr. Harbison, don't you remember me? I went to the day school forty years ago, don't you remember me? I don't know, but it's rather different. The Mandals, you know the Mandals? They're the properties.
Their granddaughter.
So, I go to some of the events at the RPR, and there's somebody there in Lakewood.
Yeah, well, it's a bit, what, one? There were two people, both their family. Wow, but she went to the day school, just, some kids in the old school. Is that Charlie? Oh, okay. No. Here? Is your house?
In the attorney that we...
He's a personal attorney. Hopefully, hopefully, never. She must have brought in more water.
I don't know, they caught her somehow. They caught her somehow.
Let's go. All right, party's over, we're gonna move ahead.
We're gonna get the water company.
Who's next? No, who's next? Okay.
This is Chairman, Appeal Forty Seventy Five.
One second, one second, I need to see a couple of members.
What's the Forty Seventy Three? Next one, Forty Seventy Three?
Yes, sir.
Appeal number Forty Seventy Five, the applicant had to leave. He has no attorney, I can't represent him without an attorney, so he has to carry it.
Which one was that?
Forty Seventy Five, on Cincinnati Avenue. Yes.
Okay.
And he's not gonna be available on July 6th, so he'd like to be carried to the August meeting.
There's no meeting on September?
Wasn't the end of August?
No.
Never meeting August?
August twenty-seven, let me guess. July 2nd, August twenty-seven.
August twenty-seven.
It is August twenty-seven.
What?
August twenty-seven.
August twenty-seven?
Yes.
No, no, yeah, the other one. Because we don't have any September. We have two, no.
No, we have one July 2nd, and the next one is August twenty-seven.
Okay. I guess it's towards the end of the month.
That's correct.
Chairman will take a vote, and the agreement is noted notice.
With the waiver of pardon.
Yes, in which you...
Right, all the people that are sitting here in this courtroom right now are gonna have to come back. Okay?
Yes.
Including you.
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion table, Appeal Number Forty Seventy Five, pilfer's wall handler, through August twenty-seventh?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Morty Gross, second.
I'll say.
Second by Hal Harbison, Madam Secretary, roll call, please, with the waiver of pardon and no new notice.
Correct.
So, you agree to waive pardon?
Yes.
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Mr. Harbison?
Yes.
Mr. Napali?
Yes.
Mr. Inber?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Albertson?
Yes, so, anyone that's here for Appeal Number Forty Seventy Five, pilfer's wall handler, that'll be heard on August twenty-seventh here in this courtroom. Thank you, good night. Going back, Appeal Number Forty Seventy Three, David Birnbaum.
The applicant seeks minus subdivision approval to subdivide an existing property known as lots ten, eleven, and twelve in block two forty-nine into six residential lots designated as proposed lots ten oh one through ten oh two on the subdivision land. Zero lot lines are proposed with three duplex buildings. A use variance is required, duplexes in the R seven five zone require a minimum of ten thousand square feet, whereas ninety-five forty-nine to ninety-five seventy-two is provided for each duplex.
I do, Joseph Kachuba, KBNA Engineering Services, Management of New Jersey. Licensed engineer, licensed special planner in State of New Jersey. Here on behalf of Mr. Birnbaum, who's here in the audience, the applicant. Proposed application for a three duplex unit. The existing lot is twenty-eight thousand, six hundred, seventy square feet, on the John Ocean Ave. Surrounded by residential uses, specifically, there's duplexes on Bruce Street to the north. Care to map here for Martin Evans?
Excuse me, one second, does anybody have a blueprint? Do you have a minus subdivision plan?
I have mine, okay. I know we didn't submit it twice in time, or, I think we were carrying it. So, is that Martin, is A1?
Yes.
What is it?
Just talking, one reading. So, this is A1, prepared by my office, color tax map showing property green, and all the other green white properties in the area.
Everybody has the minus subdivision map?
Uh huh. So, familiarize yourselves with the area, Front Street to our west, or to our east, Congress to our west. We're in an odd block, this particular block is five foot length, seventy-one point one four. Everything typically in this area splits into fifty foot lots. A set of our lots on Ocean Ave are shy of five hundred feet, about nine feet. And that's, that nine feet is what creates the variance in question. The lots are slightly undersized in area, nine thousand, five hundred, four hundred square feet, what ten thousand square feet is required. We fully comply with all the requirements, including side setbacks and coverages, we comply with the parking requirements. Duplex lots are three feet narrower than permitted, eighteen inches per unit. We're not requesting a side setback relief. All the existing improvements on the lot, there's a couple of holes on the property that are gonna be removed. We are proposing four stalls per unit. The HVAC will be located in the rear of the property.
You should.
Putting that on the record. So, variance necessitates relief under seventy-three of conditional use. Use variance can be granted where special reasons are rooted in the purposes of planning. In this particular case, conditional uses aren't like other use variances. The negative criteria is limited to the nature of the deviation, specifically, the narrower lots. The site is particularly suited for duplex development, as shown on the map. It's surrounded by a substantial amount of duplex development. Duplex development exists on Ocean Ave, actually, being constructed as we speak up in now Ocean Ave.
Do not bring up Lindin Gardens behind this project.
Done.
We don't wanna hear about that.
Not a problem. So, the site can be fully developed, complying with the requirements, other than the three feet per duplex. Development of these lots will ensure that lots eight and nine remain as two units, so eight and nine are lots directly to our east, further fifty foot lots in our R seven five zone. The one on the corner, if you're aware, is an apartment, a three unit apartment, a single family on lot nine.
Hold on, hold on, one second, what happened? Okay?
Lots thirteen and fourteen to our west were previously subdivided, pretty traditional, along the corner, and actually, they built a new home on thirteen oh one. So, that has been fully developed. So, these are the remainder lots. And therefore, developing these lots with the mineral deduction land is the most appropriate use for the property while promoting the master plan. I know you've heard it a couple of times this evening, but the master plan, and the preface indicates that the master plan has been prepared. The twenty seventeen master plan has been prepared to provide the municipality with an up-to-date master plan document that reflects the town's current conditions and values. Key among these challenges is the need to address the significant population housing growth, which the municipality has experienced and will continue to experience. The vision statement indicates, provide through zoning areas for residential development to meet the need, including affordable housing, promote a variety of housing types. The master plan also calls for using smart growth principles. This development with the de minimis reduction in area addresses the smart growth principles and provides for housing while remaining consistent with the intended zoning, and addresses the inconsistency in this particular block when it comes to width. Therefore, it's my professional opinion that the variances can be granted for the positive criteria. Reviewing the negative criteria, those possible detriments to the public good of the zone plan. Impact to the public good will be negligible. Duplexes surround the property, they're located to the rear, they're located east and west of the property, they are typical to the area. The reduction of eighteen inches per unit will be negligible. Anyone driving by will not be able to identify that these are very narrow units, they're not substantially narrower than any other unit. And again, we are requesting, we are not requesting a side or setback variance. We are also not requesting a width variance. So, we do meet the required sixty foot width, we're actually, we exceed that by approximately six feet per duplex. So, it's purely that extra three feet necessary to make the ten thousand square feet that we're demanding, or that we're, that we need. The residential use is permitted by the master plan. Therefore, my professional opinion, the benefits of the application outweigh the detriments, and the application will not have any substantial impact to the zone plan, zoning ordinance, or the public good.
Okay. First of all, do you have approval from the county yet on all these cut driveways that are backing out on Route eighty-eight?
Yes, we have approval from the county, their only comment was to pay them.
To pay them?
There was a, I'm sorry, I thought there was a traffic. They wanted us to show the desirable typical section on our plan, that was the only comment.
Show what?
Show the desirable typical section, the DOT line that we have to show on the plan, is omitted, but a minor cleanup of the plan, other than that, county's approval.
Now, when you went into county approval, you showed them, I see here on the map, you have this little island where the cars couldn't, could like, go around and back out, instead of backing out, to use that little as a driveway to cut out onto Route eighty-eight, frontwards, is that what this is for?
Correct, that's a standard DOT detail that we've been doing with the duplexes on Ocean Ave, so that all people can back out.
I just have a question on that. I know in zoning board, we all trial and error to put certain things in, to place to make it easier for duplexes or the single family homes, and so on and so forth. Going around that, after some of these go, went up, I seen cars parked right in there. So, what are we doing? This is not gonna work, because there's always a car parked, because there's always more cars than four cars in the house, for some odd reason. I don't know why there's always supposed to be six cars in that particular lot. But, 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 but we're not gonna discuss that now. So, there's always a car parked in here, so now, what are we gonna do for the cars not to back out onto eighty-eight, because you won't be able to utilize that?
The only thing we can really do is stripe it, as a...
Oh, that's gonna help?
Well, there's no, people can park anywhere, they can park on the grass if they like. People will put a car anywhere, so, enforce that really is difficult on any property, not just these properties, not just the properties on Ocean Ave. The DOT does require that we provide, the ability to provide a turnaround area.
I understand that, but we're not doing it right away. How to make, because I've seen it, you know, yes, it was a great idea, we put it in, and we wanna see it work, and now, all of a sudden, we, you go, you go down, certain areas, there are cars parked up there, on there, in there, all over, it became another two car parking spot.
Where I found it most problematic is when we provide that area much wider, so you can stack three cars instead of two. In this particular case, we don't have that ability, it's just not able to turn around.
Yes, you have one car.
That third car would have to pull in sideways behind them, and I just don't see that occurring.
Okay, so you don't have a solution for it?
I don't know that there is a solution that can be made. If we pave it, they will park, but unfortunately, we have to provide the ability to turn around.
Go ahead.
Can I ask you a possibility, I don't know if there's enough space to measure it out, but do you think there's enough space if they just put one spot in front of it, of every house, and left, like we've seen by some other duplexes, left an area, I like a parking lot, I know it would be less greary there, but kind of like a parking lot, and that way, they can turn around and may not have...
Can't break into lots.
Exactly, and not have wide open driveways to the street.
Okay, so you say an hour, if one central entrance, and then spread out?
Or one or two, or something like that. And put the required easements on each other, so that they can, they can get, or angled or something like that. The point is, is that, there...
There's not enough, there's not enough room to make an angled stall, and have somebody who will make that turn to come back.
Not angled, by other idea, the problem is, is that Ocean Ave, at least over there, has no shoulder.
Correct.
So, it's not, it's not even like, you know, you're pulling out into, behind the car that's parked on the street, you're literally going to be pulling out...
On a high speed road.
Right, well, it's on a high speed road, because nobody can move, but, and honestly, I mean, I don't wanna question the county and all their great wisdom, but I honestly think that they didn't look at that, and when they, when they looked at that.
That's a solution, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. Actually, townhouses, two blocks over, what they did was, on the outside perimeter, they did a half a spot, they bumped it out where it's not big enough for somebody to park there.
But big enough to make a K-turn.
But it's big enough that you get a K-turn hand, and K-turn, so they bumped, and they had the center, but they also had bump outs on the both sides, so people could, but not, it was not big enough that if a car tried to park there, they wouldn't block the other cars from getting out. So, that, that...
What I've seen, this...
That certainly should go on the plan.
We could certainly do that, but it's only providing the hammerhead turn area, flip it from, connecting it to the opposite side.
When I've seen this, an operation, duplexes around town, and I seen cars parked in there, seeing, oh my God. Forget about Council Line, yeah, Council Line is one place, James Street is another spot, you know, come on, we're trying to make it better for the, for the, better product, for the consumer, and they're just making it hard on themselves.
And, and, and James Street and Council Line, those places have shoulders.
Yes.
But here is no, but here there is no shoulder, it's gonna be a disaster.
You know, there's no parking shoulders, so all the cars that belong to that particular house have to go...
Right, I'm saying, there's at least a little bit of room to ease into traffic when they're backing out, here there is no room. It's gonna be a daily game of chicken.
So, if we, we could push the houses a little bit further back, we do have substantial rear setback, so we could probably push them back a couple of feet to open up the area, and I believe that's a good suggestion, to have the hammerhead area extend in the opposite direction to allow that, that turn on both sides. I think that would help mitigate the concern. You know, I don't know that we can completely eliminate it, unfortunately, you know, it is a necessity to be able to turn around, and as I said, if it's paved, people will park on it, if we don't pave it, they may park on it anyway.
If we make a half of a spot for K-turn, no one's gonna park there, but yeah, it's big enough to make a K-turn to get out.
We can certainly work with the Terry Law Systems to start that up.
Yeah, mark it, yeah, sure.
Yeah, mark it, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I'll show you what I, I'll show you what they did once they appeared.
How wide is this spot supposed to be?
Spot is nine by eight feet.
It's, it's wide, the width is nine?
Nine foot wide, eighteen one feet.
And you have to have, for each of these duplexes, you have to have four spots. So how, from one side to the other, is how many feet?
One to, uh, the lots themselves.
Yeah, just add a, just a quick math, adding, adding them all.
Lots are thirty-one feet in change.
So each lot is thirty, each lot is thirty-one, so it's a total of six times thirty-one?
Correct.
So it's one eighty-six, and we, and, and you said the nine each, so that would give you a possibility of twenty. If we just put one spot for us, it's twenty spots, but you need...
That doesn't provide any K-turn areas.
No, that would just be, just one row of parking up front. Um, that would give you twenty, you needed, you needed, you need twenty-four spots, and that would give you twenty spots.
Correct. A, we, uh, we wouldn't have sufficient number of spots. B, we would not have sufficient areas to put water meters and sewer cleanouts.
Well, you're, you're, you're...
A grass area in front for that.
Oh, why? What do you mean by that?
The utility requires that. We, we can't have one depressed curb across the whole block.
I was going to say try not to...
Oh, you can't like make it look like a, like a townhouse or something like that?
Correct, yeah, they, they won't be allowed that.
Is there a way, when you, when you take this into consideration, to beautify this a little more with more greenery and more grass? Uh, because you're taking out this, um, uh, little island here in the middle, and, and you'll be able to somehow, and you're moving the houses back. I don't know, you'll use your imagination.
Oh, simply by moving the houses back, we would green.
More green, more green down the center, all the way down. I believe, what is it, four feet up each, um, to the lot line, or two feet, so we have a total of four, a total of eight?
In that gap there?
In that gap. It's about eight? Okay, and you'll have eight feet of green grass all the way down?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How about they move the houses forward and put the parking in the back?
One second please, one second, I didn't hear what you said, but one second please. This one here is six and a half feet. I want it away from here to here. So it's like four feet. Yeah, so that's, have a nice, neat, quick patch of grass coming over and down, so it'll look more cleaner and neater and more grass here in the front of the house, or put more grass in front of the houses. Because now this is going to go further back up, right? Because they just need to make more, so it'll, there'll be more greenery and surrounded, so the, the, we'll, we'll look like all big black tap, kind of sort of.
We can certainly do that.
Okay, okay, fine. What are you saying, um, what?
No, I was just asking, to move the house forward and put the parking in the back.
You can't get there, because they have air conditioners on the side.
Put the air conditioners on the roof? I'm going to go to the other guy.
Okay.
You were talking about eliminating this?
Yes, yes. Because it ends up a parking spot, because of the parking.
But staggering it?
Yeah. So it is staggered. It is, it's four spaces, two and two staggered.
He's not, he means staggered.
The building's supposed to be staggered.
Oh, the building's supposed to be staggered. Okay, so that's, okay. Yeah, our, our chief, um, zoning officer had just mentioned that these buildings have to be staggered. So when you push them back, keep that in consideration.
Duplex has to be staggered.
You mean that the face that has to have, has to have some, yeah, and on the architecture, it'll show some stagger on the second floor, but we can certainly take a look at that and clean it up.
Okay. Okay. Okay, anyone else? Any comments? If not, you're not to the public, anyone with the public want to be heard on 4073, please step up. Seeing none, close to the public. Um, final, um, comments? What? 500, 500 square feet short. Um, um, for, for, he's actually less than 500 square feet, he is, he's 450. Four, 450.
I don't, I just want to, I don't know.
Go ahead, go ahead. My mind is racing, but you go ahead.
What's up?
What?
I, I, my comment is, is I really just don't understand why Ocean County said, oh, it's okay to do it this way. I, as much as you can do to mitigate this, this, this factor of, uh, them backing out into Ocean Park, um, Ocean Avenue, which is, what's going to happen, and we have to think about it, and it's going to be a disaster, will definitely be a disaster. I, I don't, I, I definitely don't love this design. I wish we could do something else. I understand why you're doing what you're doing, but I, I really wish that there would be some way, this is not the type of street that should be allowed to have a driveway backing out. That's my comment.
Okay.
Is that here the county done? What's up? Is there any solution?
Oh, the solution is what's been done, uh, up and down Ocean Avenue currently. Uh, in many cases, they've gone with a single driveway, uh, cut in the center, split out into the two driveways with those hammerheads on the sides to allow for that, uh, that turn. Uh, and when you do a single driveway, just the two units, it becomes, uh, essentially self-policing. No one's going to park in there because your neighbor's going to come out and scream that they're parked in your access area.
That's probably your best, your best solution.
Okay, so, 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 so you're making a, you're going to be putting a driveway...
We make one driveway entrance that will flare out to the two.
For, for the two?
For the two.
Meaning every...
One driveway would have access to eight parking stalls.
So it's going to have...
One is the back down.
Have we replaced all the sidewalks? The sidewalk?
They have.
I didn't hear all that.
Okay. There'll be no sidewalks, which...
We've agreed to replace the sidewalks across the... You're going to replace the sidewalks along the...
The current sidewalks.
Yeah. Can't get beat up.
Are you the one who made the motion?
Much of you.
Much of you. It can turn into a motion. I just kind of wanted to know, but yeah.
Okay. Okay, so can I have a motion, please, in the moment we get discussing this?
That wasn't...
So, fine, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Based on your discussion.
Based on everything we just said.
Okay, I have a motion from Moishinga, second by Avram Tali. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Geely.
Yes.
Mr. Halderson.
Yes.
Janat Tali.
Yes.
Mr. Inver.
Yes.
Mr. Dros.
Yes.
Mr. Van Laal.
Yes.
Mr. Halderson.
Yes. Good night and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward. Yes.
Your last applicant, Mr. New Jersey American Water.
Water.
The compensation is designed by your attorney.
So you have to...
I have the conflict.
Okay.
You got the conflict engineer, which means I get to go home early the first time I'm not...
Hey, good for you. Good for you.
Therefore, it is inherently beneficial.
You go listen to... You go listen to...
Is that once every nine minutes?
Jerry, you can go home and listen to the President Trump in Singapore. See how it's going with rocket.
Is this the solution? Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Is this the solution?
Yes.
Did you ask him to sample? Is that the plan?
Good evening. From which firm are you?
My name is Jeff Carr. I'm with the firm of New Jersey Car and Works.
Okay. Welcome to Lakewood.
Thank you.
This is a different kind than any kind of an ocean mama.
A number of times.
Part of this board?
Before the... A bit before the Board of Judging recently, but...
Why don't I remember your...
My number of claimants. I try to come in as a warning out to me.
I hear you. I hear you. I hear you. So then you don't know Lakewood then?
Yes.
Then I guess you don't know Lakewood.
You want in the field.
Okay. Are we ready?
We are ready. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Neil O'Brien. I'm with the law firm of Archer and Breyer for the applicant, New Jersey American Water Company, which, as you well know, is a water and sewer company for portions of your township. This application contains property at 190 Mountain View Drive, block 1077.04 lot 3. It also implicates lot 1 for reasons which I'll explain. Property is located in an OR 12, single-family zoning district. Public utilities, of course, although necessary, are not permitted as a principal or conditional use in that zoning district. This application proposes the removal of an existing lift station, which is on a flat, a flag lot adjacent to this property. It's an undersized lot set back from the street. And the new lift station will be developed upon lot 3. Currently contains an existing, single-family home, which, of course, will be removed. Associated infrastructure, along with new gravity mains and force mains, to convey the wastewater from the lift station to the applicant's conveying facilities, all the way out, although they're not at Oak Street. So because public utility facilities are not permitted, we're asking for use variants for the proposed development of the new lift station. We are also asking, of course, all utility facilities need to have a security fence around them. We are proposing an eight-foot-high board onboard, a security fence surrounded by landscaping, and as we're built, we're asking for a C variants for that fence because it is eight feet high and only four feet high is permitted in front yards for residences. Of course, we're not a residence, but nonetheless, four feet and six feet inside and rear yard. So I have with me just two folks who will offer some testimony this evening. We have our project engineer, Stephanie Cutford, and we have our licensed professional planner, Greg Sullivan. If I could have both of those individuals sworn in this time for efficiency, we'll be moving.
Both, please, raise your right hand. Would you give her the test by you identify yourself to your left hand?
So, Ms. Cutford, if you could, again, identify yourself, teleport your technical qualifications, your affiliation, and that as quickly as you can.
Stephanie Cutford, C-U-T-H-B-E-R-T. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have been with Remington and Vernick for twenty-five years now, where I have worked in the water and sewer department and have done multiple projects similar to this one, both on the water side and the sanitary side.
Ms. Cutford, why do we need pump stations? Could you explain to the board briefly how a gravity main works, how a force main works, and then the relationship between the two of them as it pertains to a lift station?
So, the way that a sanitary sewer system works is typically when it comes out of your house or out of the business, it flows by gravity into a gravity main. And it flows from there as far as it can. Obviously, we have to put a slope on the pipe, so as you go along, based upon the topography, it gets deeper and deeper until you get to a point where you can no longer put pipe in that flows by gravity. So then you have a lift station. Lift stations are typically in the low areas, and their function is to merely collect the sanitary sewage and pump it to the next point where it can then flow by gravity. So that's what you'll see in this particular situation as well. The existing lift station that is out there now is collecting sanitary sewage from the surrounding area and pumps it to another location where it can then flow by gravity again.
So like all water, it goes downhill until it gets too deep to be manageable, then we've got to bring it back up?
Correct.
Will that allow it where, once again, it can flow downhill to wherever it's ultimately going to be treated?
Correct. So it just goes along in the process?
Till that's...
What's that?
Till A look. Isn't that where the sewer station is?
Where's it?
Sewer treatment plant? Where's the sewer treatment plant?
Oh, yes. The ocean... I'm not sure where it is, actually, but the treatment plant, Washington County?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So, could you explain...
This probably goes to, right, a breakdown? Breakdown treatment plant?
Okay. Explain to the board the area that this lift station will benefit, how the sewage gets here, and what happens through it, and just geographically. Now, we have copy of the tax map on our cover sheet. If you'd like to use that, it's up to you.
So currently, the existing lift station takes the area basically along Chestnut Street, from Oak Street down, and then to Route 9. So that entire area flows by gravity to the existing lift station. So what you'll see here is the existing lift station is ringed. Its entire area is flowing to it. That's the load point. And then currently, the sewage pumped up to Route 9 where that flows by gravity.
Just very briefly, you pointed to the upper part of the tax map here. If you don't mind, give a couple of those street names, but a lot of those streets are currently paper streets, some developed properties, right?
Correct. So the upper part of your drainage area to the pump station is Oak Street. Again, it's bordered on the west by Route 9, and then Chestnut Street on the southern portion.
And as some of these paper streets become developed, obviously, we'll need additional capacity. How are we addressing that?
The way that we're addressing that now is with the new lift station. The purpose of the new lift station is the current lift station is on a small flag lot. It's older in nature, and currently, it can't handle the capacity of the existing flow. So any new flow that goes to it certainly will not be able to be handled by the current lift station. Because of the size of the lot, we cannot expand on that lot, so it's for that reason that we had to seek another property to construct the new lift station. The reason we explained why you were looking for the low area is because we have to collect or intercept those flows that are already going to the existing lift station so that we can now collect them and pump them to a new spot. So we had to find an area or a site in the same area to collect those flows.
So what are some of the other issues associated with the existing lift station? Is it current sites near the end of its useful life?
Yes. Older in nature. It needs improvements. Like I said, it's not handling the flows that are going to it right now. So just in that respect, it needs upgrades. And the fact that it will see future flows, we need to increase the flows to the capacity to handle those flows as well.
For new development, it comes along in some of these areas we just talked about.
Correct.
What about the generator? How is it handled currently at the new lift station?
The generator currently is outside. Again, that's older in nature. So what you will see with the new lift station is the new lift station will consist of a below-grade station. It's called a submersible pump station, where all of the flows will now be conveyed to a below-grade vault. So you will not see any of that above grade. You will see a below-grade vault, which then goes to another chamber with the pumps in it. The pumps are also below grade. On the new site will be a new generator, which will be natural gas supplied, which will allow the station to continue operating during emergencies. Because it's natural gas and not diesel, the personnel from American Water will not have to go to the site to refill the tanks. It can operate continuously during an emergency event.
So just to clarify, the existing generator is that is diesel?
Yes.
So the first exhibit I put out was the cover sheet from the package that was submitted to Remarque Avenue. This is the actual site plan showing the facility itself in Remarque Avenue. Again, and I'm sorry if I'm asking you to... Just explain to the board what's in here and what you just described and how it all works.
Okay. This is Chestnut Street over here, and this is Mountview Drive, and this is the property right now where there's a house on site. The purpose is that the intent is to demolish the house and construct the new lift station there. What we will do is we will intercept the flows and bring them into the new lift station.
Again, a below-grade main, right?
Below-grade main, correct. Gravity main will flow to this chamber, which is the wet well, which will have a screen on it, so it will take out all of the rags from all of the... And that will take the pumps more reliable, the lift station more reliable, and then in this chamber are the control valves. So what will happen is, as we're coming here, it'll be pumped out through the force main. So once it comes in here, it turns into a force main. It will be pumped up to that load point. Now, where the new pump or the new force main is going to discharge is going to run along Vermont Avenue and discharge in Oak Street. To a new location. So there's going to be about 5,000 linear feet of new force main that will be constructed.
From this pump station, all the way to Oak Street?
Yes.
Long way.
That's a mile.
Yeah, long line.
It doesn't...
This is going to be strong enough to pump that thing that powerful for a mile long?
Everything was designed for that location. The reason why that location was selected was the water company did an analysis of the system, and they wanted to make sure that when that new pump station discharged the flows, that the downstream system had the capacity to handle that. So their system modeling essentially selected that location so that when they did discharge, they knew that the downstream gravity main could handle that flow.
But as a direct answer to the question, I think the force main itself is only 5,000 feet, and then it drops to gravity main, correct?
Correct, yes.
Oh, okay. So it's not the full length. So when you're pumping up... I'll be right with you a little more. So when you're pumping up at Mountain View, coming up?
Yes.
Force main?
Yes.
That whole area up along, plus it kind of goes through the dirt road on Vermont Avenue?
Correct, yes.
All along that dirt road, past your wells, where all your wells are? Yes, okay. So where, at what point does it pick up gravity? Not by Oak Street. You're saying by the time it gets to Oak Street, it's on gravity?
No, when it gets to Oak Street, it discharges gravity.
So from Chestnut till Oak is a mile?
5,000 feet.
5,000 feet?
Yes.
Okay. And that's strong enough to pump that?
Yes.
All the way through?
Yes. It was designed for that. It was sized for that.
That's the whole way?
Yes. They can do it.
Yes. We've put in force mains that long before.
That's going to be a paddle paddle.
We've done that before, yes.
What are you going to sample of this stuff?
No, I'm just kidding now. That's kind of a force, a real force going up there. You don't need a paddle.
Now, you mentioned you did take into account that all through Vermont, there's going to be a lot of development going on in there.
Correct.
That's all taken into account because right now, maybe 50% of it hasn't been developed.
All of them all.
Well, one of the things that public utilities has to do is stay ahead of related thing, the development potential of the resorts that are nearby, is developed from Vermont Avenue. So this is part of that strategic plan, and as you mentioned, lots of those streets are paper streets, but as every... As every business has a related project.
Yeah, we have the Oak Street corridor over there. If you saw the area where all those about 500, 600 homes are going up over there, each home can have like five, six bedrooms, kitchens, and so on. And just all taken into account.
Yeah. Nobody wants to design it twice or construct it twice. So all of that was taken into account. We looked at all of the developments, or I should say, the water company looked at all of the developments, which were currently approved. And then we looked at the zoning. We looked at what septic systems would connect. We looked at what properties could be developed. And then you put a peaking factor on that, too. So not only do you account for the average daily flows, but you account for that peak so that you have a safety factor essentially on your design.
Obie? Obie, go ahead.
I know that there are going to be 13 houses throughout that area which will be at, okay? And that's going to be the septic, that's going to be attached to the city ward.
Yes.
So that's going to connect to that right on Vermont.
It has been...
And that's going to take it down all the way down.
That's going to take it all the way down to where you want it to go, correct?
Yes.
And you're taking that into consideration?
That whole area has been evaluated, and the flows have been assigned to each individual property in terms of what they could contribute to the pump station. So just to give you an idea, the existing pump station has a capacity of .24 million gallons per day. The new one will be double that. It will be .49 million gallons per day.
So if anybody that has as close to that line can tap into that particular pump station to be able... They have septic, they can get into sewer line for future development?
That pump station is now sized to take future development, yes.
Obie, where do you live next to the pump?
I live about 100 yards... No, I live about 100 feet from that pump.
I want to put our engineer here for a moment.
Yeah, to clarify that.
Yeah.
The force main...
I'm not questioning the... I don't even have to pass a sign.
What they said is accurate, besides the pump station. Pump station, the force main itself does not get tapped into. Individual houses do not have it.
Right, I understand.
Right.
You can't. You're losing the force of it if you...
Right. So eventually, any sewers, any development that happens in the area, they will construct gravity sewers, will feed down to the new station, and then that station has to send it back up.
And they say you go downstream, then you're going to be going upstream.
Correct.
Right.
Sir, why, what do you want to say, one?
It was certainly the cover sheet of the site plan set, what we're pointing to when they go to the tax sheet. Can I...
Go ahead.
You mentioned, Mr. Bryant mentioned about the fencing around it. What kind of fence did you want to put around? An eight-foot wood?
Eight-foot wood stockade fence. It's board on board.
Why that? I mean, the other site on, by Oak Street has, I think it's the barbed wire fence that people can't climb over. Wouldn't you want to make sure people can climb over it in this one?
It's the height of eight foot, and we were also looking at aesthetically in terms of blending in with the surrounding area. One thing I did not mention is the generator for the new site will be located inside of the building. That is the only thing that's going to be in the building, along with the controls. The reason for putting it in the building. The building is going to be constructed so that it's sound attenuated, since it is in a residential area. And the building is going to be constructed with vinyl siding to blend in with the surrounding area. The stockade fence was selected for the same reason, the height of it, and then also to blend in aesthetically.
Showing that, like, the side behind you on the tree with all the... Just to clarify, the plan says board on board.
Right, yeah.
Should be board on board.
This building in this site is typical to what the water company does around town.
Correct.
Where you see all those little red stations all over the place.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess you go for shrubs and green all around it, like I see on the plan?
Yes. So we do have a proposed planting plan. Around the fence area are going to be evergreens, which will shield the fence area and also camouflage the lift station in additional manners. In front of them are lower shrubs that are flowering to provide some aesthetic pleasing to the eye for the surrounding area as well. So we do have that planting plan up here as a rendering. And you can see that we have the rendering from two views, one from Mountain View and one from Chestnut. The top view is from Mountain View, which the residents on Mountain View will see, and then the bottom view is from Chestnut Street, which everybody passing along Chestnut Street will see.
So the entrance activity is going to be on Vermont Avenue?
Correct, yes.
And for smell?
For smell? The current station does not have any odor control, and there are no issues, so there is none proposed for this lift station. Also, the way it's going to be operated will also assist with that. There are going to be certain controls on the pump which don't allow the levels in the wet well to go up and down, and that really is what causes the odors when you have that air that is in the wet well where the sewage is being expelled. So by operating at a current or a constant level, you don't have that air entering the wet well and being expelled. When it's being expelled, that's when you see the odors coming out of the wet well.
But there will be vents to let that gases escape somewhere or another?
Yes, there will be.
And are there any controls that the odor shouldn't come out, but it goes somewhere else? That it shouldn't come out of those vents?
Well, they do need to be vented, the way that it operates, but currently, there is no odor control on those vents.
And there's no need?
And there's no need?
Based upon the way that the current station is operating, there are no odors coming out of that.
Do you have any complaints from various different pump stations around our town or around any other town where odor was an issue?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Sorry, American Water...
Okay. But you don't have, you don't get any complaints that there are any odor smells, is that... Okay. Would you, Ryan, would you agree with that?
Yes, yes, I agree.
Okay. Let's discuss the humming sounds and the noise on it. At what level? Are we below the level of the sound that's permissible or even off the guarantee?
Yes, we are below that. And that is for one reason, also for the generator, why we put the generator in a building as well. Yes.
How often does the generator go on, just in emergencies?
Yes.
In emergencies, correct.
So when there's an emergency, I think everybody would like to hear the noise. They know it's working.
That everything is working.
You don't hear it?
Okay. I assume this place is going to be alarmed and secured?
The entrance into it is secured. I'm not quite certain whether American Water has alarms on their facilities. The controls that are in there, it's called SCADA. Usually, when the door entrance is open and closed, you'll get notice that somebody has entered and closed the door. With respect to security lighting, there are two pole-mounted lights on the site. There, it's way around. Maybe controls there. They will be on an on-off switch so that it's not disturbing the surrounding area. On the building itself, there's two doors. Both doors will have an over light, overhead light on the door entry, which will be both on a photocell, which is from dusk to dawn, on, and then they're also manual offline.
So there won't be a existing light on there 24 hours a day, like during dark hours? So if somebody does, got a bit break in there or does some mischief work, somebody will notice it?
The lights over the doors will be on 20...
Be on at all time?
Yes, will be on during the night hours.
Okay. Let's talk about sidewalks. I know that in the past, when we discussed the wells down on Vermont Avenue, we did require you to put on sidewalks because that was a dead street that was a little way back in the woods over there.
We actually had a little... This is a real... That's my good. We actually had a little bad for sidewalks on that side. We were referring to the Oak Street well station in the old city. We actually did provide, my apartment provided sidewalks. It's probably due to, I mean, it's not everybody, that terror, the movement, that information.
Correct.
People like that, what we meant, they are here, they will be replaced, or ready, and they have a sidewalk.
So all over the property, they will... Because this is an active street here where people are able to do walk and live and go up to mine and all around that whole neighborhood, so you are going to want to see proper sidewalks all around it.
So you don't have...
On Chestnut then, on Mountain View.
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Sir, the chair? I'm going to confirm. So on Chestnut Street, you will have sidewalks going across up?
There are currently sidewalks there, yes. So there's sidewalks on Chestnut and Mountain View, and they will remain there, and if any get damaged during construction, they'll be repaired.
Okay. Fine. What else did you want to say? Or did I cover everything?
Do I just have Mr. Sullivan, if I will, just page for our areas? Mr. Chairman.
Greg, can you give us your full name?
Gregory Sullivan. Sullivan is spelled S-U-L-L-I-V-A-N.
Thank you.
Professional planner with the firm of Remington and Vernick. Engineers have been with the firm for 28 years. Professional planner since 1997. Also, professional engineer and working in the State Department this decade.
Okay. That's fine.
Mr. Sullivan, you've heard colleagues explanations for why this facility has to go here. Is this location the property suitable for this?
Yes, it is, because it's located currently in the neighborhood and in the area of the existing gravity mains. As Stephanie has indicated, we will be putting in a new force main. In terms of the... Excuse me?
Go ahead. I'll talk to myself.
In terms of the utility, the public utility structures are not allowed in the zone. They're only permitted in certain zones in your particular municipality. There's no properties... We're not in one of those zones. So in the R-12 zone, which is the zone that we're in, the public utility is not allowed.
So again, you talked about replacing the existing station, which is also non-permitted use, correct?
Correct.
And based on your review of zone ordinance and master plan, you've been only single-family homes and houses of worship, public utilities are not permitted in this zone?
Yes, only single-family homes, houses of worship, and schools are permitted. So the public utility that is being proposed and currently exists in this zone, adjacent to adjacent lots, is a non-permitted use.
But public utility use is a unique sort of use because you have a list of permitted uses that all need public utilities, obviously, right?
Yes.
You need to have a public station, you need a public station to convey that sewage.
Yes.